I'm going to call to order a meeting of the Board of Selectmen for June 5th, 2017. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance if we could all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first on the agenda is approval of our minutes from May 16th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
A motion to accept the minutes as printed from May 2017.
May 16th, okay. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Everybody get a chance to read them, they look good? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next, we have Communications and Announcements. First on the list is Recognition. So I'm going to ask Sergeant Pickett to come on up.
Well, I want to start off by, on behalf of the Board, thank you for your 36 years of dedicated service to this town, an amazing career. And I know your last shift is tomorrow, but we wanted to have you in tonight to give you recognition and say thank you because 36 years of an amazing career and you've kept us all safe for 36 years and we can't thank you enough for that. And we really, really appreciate your work. So we have a certificate here, a certificate of appreciation presented to Sergeant John H. Pickett for 36 years of dedicated service to the town of North Andover, starting as a reserve police officer on June 15th, 1981, advancing to a permanent full-time police officer on January 10th, 1983, and further advancing to police sergeant on January 2nd, 1990. Your professionalism, dedication, and integrity have been a credit to yourself, the police department, and the entire town. Thank you in part for the town of North Andover and best to you in your retirement. Presented by the North Andover Board of Selectmen. Thank you. (applause) I know you're busy, I know you've got a lot of things going on, so...
Well, I was just telling the chief that since they got my cruiser fixed, I was thinking about maybe changing my mind.[154.44][154.44](laughter) So, no, I'd just like to say thank you for giving me a good career. I'm glad I made it this far because there was some doubts with some of the injuries that I had and so I didn't know how long I was going to be able to keep going, but anyways, it's come to a, it finally came to an end of my, finally I got my mind to say, "You gotta go."[186.12][186.12](laughter) So I'll miss it, but I'm going to stay busy with things to do on my house in town and also up north and enjoy the boat and ride my bikes, motorcycles.
You have a wedding coming up too, right? One of your daughters is getting married soon.
Yes, I have two weddings coming up, one in July and one in August.
I'm sure you don't want to stay for overtime.[212.12][212.12](laughter)
So you are going to be busy.
I have put in requests to continue to serve the town in the capacity of a special police officer, so it's...
And we appreciate that, yeah.
I'm not expecting, you know, anything, you know, I don't have to make any plans anytime quick because I've got a lot to do, so, but maybe at the end of the summer I may accept a few calls, you know, so, and then whatever else I can, you know, because normally I've worked on the Christmas parade, so, and I know that we do other things that they, the specials do, the Fourth of Julys and, you know, all the other activities that the town puts on, so.
And if you run out of things to do around your house, we always have plenty of board openings. We're always looking for people to fill those slots, whatever you'd like to do. But again, John, thank you so much and, you know, we really, really appreciate your dedicated service for all these years and really keeping us safe at night and keeping us safe all the time, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.[279.64][279.64](applause)
You guys, I know you're welcome to leave at this point if you want, you don't have to stay, unless anybody else wants to say anything on behalf of Sergeant Pickett. Karen, you want to say anything? Anyone want to say anything? But you're welcome, you're certainly welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Thank you very much.
Goodnight.
Thank you.
Let them filter out. All right, next on the agenda, we have another recognition for Kathy Darby, our Human Resources Director. She has achieved certification as a Society of Human Resource Management Professional by meeting the experience, education, and demonstrated HR competency and knowledge required as establishment by S R M A, S R A, S H R M, sorry. And I'm assuming that is a national organization, so congratulations. Kathy couldn't be here tonight, but congratulations to Kathy and thank you for your, her continued service to this town as well. Ms. Manager, would you like to say anything on that?
I think just the both of them are going to comment on the next one yet, on the next item of the agenda, but we have always supported in the organization, as I know the Board has lifelong learning, the idea that professionals have an interest to go back and either take on some additional professional education in the particular given field or if they have some other interests that we think will help the organization, and we have regularly funded those requests, and this is another example of that, as is the next example.
So Kathy Keenan has received her certificate of achievement, Supervisory Leadership Development Program sponsored by the Massachusetts Municipal Personnel Association for Spring of 2017. So again, I don't think Kathleen is here, is she?
She's not.
She's not, is she?
No.
Nope, but again, congratulations, and as the manager said, thank you for your initiative to continue to learn and be, and to improve yourself, which, and of course improves the town, so thank you for that. Okay. Let's see, next on the agenda, we have, we have a couple of updates. This is something we started last year and we're continuing that. We are asking for some of our boards to come in and provide a yearly update of their activities and what their future plans are and just really keep us up to date and keep us in touch with what the Board is doing. So first, tonight we have an update from the Planning Board. So Mr. Simons, I see you in the audience there.
I can go there.
You can either sit or you can stand.
Uh, let's see, I had, I don't know if, did you see the slide deck that I had prepared? I didn't know if you...
We'll just pull it up in this one. I probably didn't have it.
Do you have it?
I can carry it off, I can see if I can do that. I can do that, so I can.
Do you want to do it in, or do you want me to do it?
Can you do it? Can you pull it up there? I didn't bring my desktop, I brought my laptop. I did not properly prepare for this, John.
We're so used to the Planning Board meetings, we do everything, we do everything without paper now, so...
Hey, we do that too. Is it connecting? This is meeting room, right?
Meeting room, yes.
Seems like it's trying to connect.
Okay, let me take a bit. Is it on there?
Let me see if I can get the...
Is it trying to connect to the meeting room?
Yeah, it's just not connecting. This is AirPlay, right?
Yep, but it's showing on the...
Little technology issue here.
Wait, can you see over, can you see over on the desk? Are you in AirPlay? It's AirPlay, yeah. No one can see me.
Oh, there we go, beautiful.
Hold on.
Okay, just direct me through, John.
Okay, let's go to the Agenda page here. First of all, thank you for having me. I think this is actually a good process, it's a good idea to share information with the Boards. I think in some respects, maybe having something where we spend a half-day with all the Boards together might even be something we might want to do eventually because I think there's a lot of opportunities to share and work together and, because I think everybody understands the problems and issues in their area, but they don't necessarily understand the issues in the related areas. Planning Board obviously works pretty closely with the Conservation Commission, so we have a pretty good understanding, but even with us, with some of the other Boards, it would be useful to have an understanding. So what I'd like to do is to tell you a little bit about what's happened over the past year and then spend some time talking about what's going on for the future. So if you could roll forward. As you can see, this is a summarization of all the different projects and approvals that we've gone over the past year, except for the site plan reviews, which I'm going to do separately. And I think that what's interesting about it is it's a relatively low level of activity, but it's a pretty diverse level of activity, and particularly what you see, and I'll show you another slide on it, is the very low level of subdivision in single-family housing construction. If you could compare this to when I actually first joined the Board, we were getting over 200 single-family housing starts a year, and now we have less than 20, so it's really much different. What you see now is we still continue to get watershed special permits generally for individual houses or people want to put in a pool or something like that. I'll also show you where I think the major activity has occurred, and this is probably a good thing in many respects, is in the terms of commercial development for the site plan reviews. So that's, and I'm going to, we'll show you some of the large projects we've had over the past year, and then we can move on to what's large going forward, so if you could roll forward. So this, and I'll jump through this very quickly, is the Forgetta property in 1210 Osgood Street, which was one of the large, it's really a combination, commercial and residential development that we did over the last year. And believe it or not, for a site that is on former farmland, it was actually quite complex from an engineering point of view because of the changes in slope and topography and how to manage the drainage and how to minimize the impact of the residential development on the people that lived across the street on French Farm in those neighborhoods. So there was quite a bit of work that we did, it took a long time. We were fortunate that developer was a good developer, actually there's two of them, one for the commercial piece and one for the residential piece, but we did finish that project last year, and I believe after they get all of their permits from the state, they will actually start construction probably sometime this summer, so. And I think one of the things, you know, and this gets at, I think, the broader trend where you're seeing less single-family housing and more multifamily housing in town, is one of the unique characteristics of this project is it's all commercial-rate project for the residential of one or two bedrooms, and we actually spent a fair amount of time talking to the school committee and reviewing, and we think it's going to have a very minor impact unlike some of the 40B projects on, on the schools, so it actually is going to be a big plus, net plus, I think, in terms of tax revenue. So if you could move to the next one. Murray Mack College, we, every year we usually get one or two projects from Murray Mack. This year, it's actually more related to a project that did two things, one is to expand the campus center a little bit, and second is a major redo of the athletic fields. And, you know, generally pretty simple and pretty straightforward, I mean, we do have projects, you'll see a project from Brooks as well, they usually have a lot of architects, a lot of staff, a lot of thought put into it because they have to live with the consequences of it, and this is an attempt to upgrade their athletic facilities fairly significantly, The next item, and I think we've talked about this a little bit in the past, is that the Edgewood CCRAC is a relatively small extension to the Edgewood complex for an Alzheimer's unit, and the big plus of that is the town was able to get two very significant benefits and concessions in that 17 out of 20 acres of that property is now protected open space that we will be able to use, otherwise we would have had to purchase it ourselves. And the other thing is that the Edgewood folks have agreed to give the town a access amusement across their entire property, and to this point, believe it or not, we did not have the rights to traverse their property even though people did it anyway, but we got that legal right as part of this. So there were two large public benefits that may not, people may not be immediately aware of.
Are you taking questions now or are you...
Yes, now is fine.
I'm just curious, do you, you probably haven't done this, but what type of value would you have put on that if we did have to purchase it, just roughly? Or do you want to get back to me?
I would say, I mean, we were talking 800,000 to a million, something like that, yeah. So it was, we think it's nestled into the property, it'll have relatively little impact with the viewscape and so forth, and so we saved 800,000 to basically get that and to add to the tax revenue a little bit, I mean...
And have the access.
I'm sure if you were like an absolute ardent conservationist, you would have, maybe would have preferred to pay for it out of CPA, but I think it's a reasonable compromise to the way we did it, so I think it made sense.
All right, thank you.
So, and then Brooks School, they are actually building a new art center, and again, they put a tremendous amount of thought and effort into all the projects, so it's actually easy, pretty easy from a Planning Board perspective. And we actually learn a lot from developers like that because we really quiz their architects about, you know, how they designed it, why they designed it the way they did, and what features they put in and so forth, so it's actually helpful to us as a learning experience. The, with all of the fun at town meeting, people sort of forget that over the last year, we actually did approve a major project at Osgood Landing for the solar panels. Actually, it was a sort of a two-phased project that was an initial project that the Planning Board approved with conditions the applicant appealed, and then the applicant and the town worked together and came up with a new plan, and that's what the Planning Board approved. And as part of that, we also had to plan on moving around some of the existing uses, in particular the nets use. So that was a large project as well that we finished over the past year. So moving on to the next one. Next item is the West Mill, the Davidson-Farber Mill. And there, I think, I will say, I think the developer of that project has really thought through for the long term what they want to do and what they need to do, and they collaborate very closely with the Planning Board and all their needs, and they, and basically what they have decided to do is that they feel they need to add to the parking, so we approved a new parking plan, and they took down some of the non-historical buildings on the property, and that will set them up for the next phase. And they have a fairly disciplined methodology and a fairly disciplined, long-range plan that they've shared with us and continue to share with us. So I think from a economic development point of view, my personal opinion is that that is one, if not the most important parcels in town in terms of future growth and development, because I think there's a lot of potential for that property, and it'll also, I think, have some spillover effect on the, some of the abutting parcels, and even potentially as a way to kick-start some development downtown. So we're pleased we have a good rapport with the developers, and we don't want to continue to maintain that going forward, so.
John, do we know how, what percentage of that is already leased out of the, of the new?
Well, they've actually, I'm not sure, I think they've done pretty well, you know, they had, obviously, the old model was two large tenants, Converse and Schneider, and they're going for the exact opposite now is multiple small tenants, and that way they hedge their bets a little bit, but I think they've done pretty well, they've, I mean, Rosemary, you may know just from, you know...
Not exactly, but just, you're right, I have contact with Tina and a few other people, and they are, they're doing great.
Yeah.
I mean, when we first got the word that Converse was leaving and Schneider, of course, we were, we were all like, "Oh, boy." They've turned it around really quick, so...
They're almost fully occupied with the commitments that they have.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
That's great.
So, yeah. And then, let's move on to the subdivisions that you can see, again, you add up all the subdivisions, we have 12, 16, 19 lots, it's pretty small. The largest one is one way out on Bockford Street, which is a PRD, so we'll get some open space, and the other ones are generally sort of smaller infill properties that are closer to town. I mean, I think that frankly, that's probably going to be the pattern of development for a single-family residential. I mean, there are, there are a few large parcels that are open that potentially over time can be developed, but I think that in general, you're going to see smaller five, seven, 10-acre parcels that just never got developed in the past and will be developed now. You'll continue to see for single-family, some, you know, Form A lots that are on existing streets that might get developed here and there, but there generally aren't going to be as many of them as there were in the past, so. Moving on to the next item, one of the areas, the Planning Board has the responsibility for granting watershed special permits, but we think in addition to that, we want to take some really proactive activity to work with people who live in the watershed, to educate them, and also in the long term to, so that they will take action that will improve the quality of the water supply. And Pete Boynton of our Board, who's actually also the harbor master, is really the leader of this, and it was his idea to put together the watershed mailer and send it to people in the watershed, and we want to continue, you know, it's, it's one of those light-touch things because you don't want to lecture people about it, you don't want to force something down people's throat, but you also want people to be aware of that there's certain activities that they should do on the property, in the watershed, to, to make it better, and also there's certain things you can't do like clear-cut your property if you live right next to the lake, so. So far, I think we want to continue to deal with, at least on an annual basis, we're actually reviewing the discharges because now we actually have metrics that show where the sources of pollution are coming from, so we can work back and resolve that over time, so. So if you can just move on. Yeah, and there's just a couple, the mailer, this is just what the mailer looks like if you're interested, so. So in terms of looking forward to the future, there is, I think as everybody knows, going to be a lot of change and transition to the Board. We'll have two new members whose first meeting will be tomorrow night, because we've had two members that have left. We've had a new associate member in the last six months who has been with it, yeah, for four months now. Aside from, I think, some of the continued projects with some of the things that we've talked about so far, the obvious major activity on the radar screen is the master plan update, which could potentially trigger some zoning changes, it could drive some economic development changes, but it's an 18- to 24-month project. I think people are aware that we've hired RKG associates, so the town has, and the project is still in the initial stages. Unfortunately, the two members of our Board that were directly involved in it are, will no longer be on the Board, so we'll have to probably get other people from our committee, probably at least one of the new members, to take an important role in the master plan process, but we do view that as an important priority, and it's an important priority for the planner as well as the consultant, so. One of the other activities that we're working on now, and this will play into the master plan, but it's starting off as a distinct thing, is a regional housing plan, where we really analyze all the housing types in the community. We're getting help from the Murray Mack Valley Planning Commission on that, and I think that will help. You know, it's a lot of the questions of what have been the changes in the pattern of residential development over time, where are we higher or lower than the Murray Mack Valley averages, where are we higher or lower than the state averages, and so forth. So we're looking forward to that because we think that will help shed some light on getting us to the 10% affordable housing target and some of the other housing objectives we have in the community, so. So that's, you know, pretty much it. We obviously, I did not put anything in to talk about, you know, what is, are the next steps after town meeting, but that obviously is another thing that we will take into consideration as we go forward as well. Any questions?
Well, yeah, John, one question. So what's the status and what are we doing about staffing the master plan, master planning committee with, with citizens? Has that been, how's that been going or proceeding? Maybe it's a question for Phil too, or...
So Rosemary and I sit on that committee, and so it's, it's the master, it's a committee for a committee to advise a committee.
Yeah, very good.
Wow, that's scary right there. You have three committees in one sentence.
We are, we are vetting, well, in fairness, one is a board, so...
Yeah, there you go.
But we are vetting, we accepted applications, and we got, at last count, 22 applications, and we were supposed to be sitting down to review them, to build a master plan committee, but our, our job was tasked to make recommendations to the Planning Board, who would then appoint the committee which in turn advises them, but it has been a little bit...
So when are you looking to have that committee in place? When do you think it will be?
I mean, we'd like to do it pretty quickly because we'd like to go, I think the momentum started to build up, I think, you know, there's enough issues that people will want to look at, so if, you know, if, if we could get the members appointed, you know, end of June, something like that, and then we could start to meet, and again, it's, you know, the governance of it is, is something that has to be worked out. I will tell you that from past experience with both formal master plans in North Andover and things that were effectively master plans, but we call it something different, it, what it requires probably more than anything else is one or two citizen volunteers are willing to put in actually a lot of time and a lot of effort, and it's almost like, you know, why would you do this? But if you're passionate about it, if you like it, if you believe in it, there needs to be a couple individuals, that's when it works best, when there's passion and commitment. It's, you know, the Boards can, particularly the Planning Board, but can do so much, but having a couple dedicated individuals that really go well beyond the call of duty, I think is a, you know, is also a very important part of it, so hopefully we'll, we'll get a few people that really are passionate about it.
It's a pretty good, it's a pretty good list, pretty diverse, but don't scare them off because we do have a, we do have a consultant that will work with you, so you're not just thrown into the fire and, you know...
And I mean, you know, if you think about it, we're, it's not like we're starting from scratch that we have nothing, I mean, is that there's an awful lot of information, there's an open space plan, you know, there's past economic development plans, but you, you know, I think one of the key things is to solicit people's views and to understand what people want, but also more what people want in context, because if they want something, you know, "I want A, B, C, D," but I'm not willing to pay for it, then that, you know, is, you, you want to get a broad cross-section opinion and well, and I think, you know, experiences that projects that have solicited broad opinion tend to work better than ones that are done just by a small handful of people, so it's, it's that outreach, public forums, you know, if you imagine if you came in here and had a workshop and 25 people showed up, just ordinary people, that would be awesome because then you would get a broad cross-section of views, so.
Pickett, just on that, because I think there's been a level of confusion created that I want to clarify for the public, it would maybe help get to the timeline that want to clarify for the public, it would maybe help get to the timeline that Jim and Valen quite identified. The committee's role is really to do exactly what you last identified, John, and that is to make sure that we have several public forums in which different topics are brought up, and everybody, whatever that means, the community's opinions included. Ultimately, we've hired one of the preeminent consultants to help us with the project. We did not have a consultant 15 to 18 to 19, how many years ago that there was? And so, we also have more planning staff. We have two full-time planning staff members. We didn't have that back then as well. So, I think the resident input, and one of the things that I think the committee's trying to focus on with the, what was originally 22 or 23, and hopefully we can get together whatever number, is really the committee's job is to make sure that the community is represented. They're not writing the plan. It is not their individual opinions about what the community will be. The job of the committee is to foster a dialogue with the community, whether that's through surveys or whether it's through public sessions. So, the committee's role, whoever the committee selects, the committee's role is to make sure that the process works, so what the planning board gets back from the consultant represents as much feedback as possible from the community. So, for those people who may still have an interest, I guess, in my opinion, it shouldn't be particularly difficult, easier for me to say, not sitting on the committee, to select a committee, because the committee's job, you're really looking for people to foster the dialogue, you're not looking for people to write the master plan. Looking for people to get in a room and, how do we hold on this thing? Can we have four to six events? And make you, those folks can encourage through robocalls and surveys and whatever else, as much dialogue in the community, where 15, 20 years ago, one of the members, I think, did the lion's share of the.
Did the lion's share of the work, yeah.
Was it his name? He doesn't live in town anymore. What was his name?
No, Mike Skeena.
Yeah. And now we've, the town's invested heavily, and again, affirm that this is what they almost exclusively do, and they've done it for a number of communities. So, the committee that's being identified as a committee to foster a dialogue, not to write a plan, and I think that's an important distinction.
It wasn't Mike Skeena that I was seeing there, Mike Skeena was a lovely man, but there was another man who was really involved, and I, it escapes me, that's not important.
Back and look at, yeah.
But you were right, it was, it was a series of open meetings where people would come and just.
Right.
Give their opinions.
That's exciting though, it's exciting to see that getting going, and, you know, we're real excited to see the end product when that comes out. So, any other questions for John? Last year, we did talk about board rotations, rotating leadership, and I know this is probably not the best time to talk about it because you've got so much in front of you and new board members on, but hopefully you're thinking about some succession planning.
Well, I mean, yeah, exactly, it was.
Let me just finish, John, so no reflection on the job you're doing, you do excellent job, but it's just so that we have, you know, we can have the opportunity to have other leaders on the board as well that have that, you know, have that ability to step in if needed, you know? We do that every year on this board.
Yeah, I mean, I actually will be in a situation where four of the six members of the board have less than three months' worth of experience on the board, and I've already asked the other board member who's been on for a while if he wanted to be the chair, and he doesn't want to be the chair, so.
Well, I can tell you the discussions have had without playing, just to be clear, is I think you do an extraordinary job. I've said to every person that I've spoken to as the appointing authority, that there is not a, the seats are not different, and that ultimately, whether it's this year because it's a very unusual year, or in future years, any person appointed should assume that it's possible that they would become chair. If they're only going to sit in, if they're going to sit in the seat with never expecting they would be chair, then it's not the same role. There's not a chairperson in four of the seats, there are five seats, and this year may very well represent an extraordinary set of circumstances that I can recommend. But it is important for every board, whether I appoint them on, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, that on every annual agenda is a vote, and that goes to the CPC appointment of the planning board position as well, and that the board has to find some way to recognize the need for succession planning and enjoying the benefits of people's experience from a different perspective than just, than the seat that's the chair or not the chair, if that makes any sense. So, anyway, this year may represent a different case, but it's important that there's a vote every year.
Yeah, no, good, and I mean, one of the things, I actually talked to town council before the meeting tonight, and she's preparing a briefing packet for the new members that talks about the subdivision control and so forth, and I think, you know, at some level, the most important thing over the next three months is just to get everybody up to speed with some of the nuances of special permits, subdivision control, watershed permits, and so forth, and it's, it's really not that complicated, but it is, it does have a few twists and turns along the way. If we can get everybody up there at the speed, then it becomes a lot easier, so.
Well, John, thank you for coming in, and again, thank you for your continued service to the town and to your board as well. I know it's, there's a lot of work there, and we really appreciate the work that you do.
Good, well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you for the presentation.
Okay, I think next we have an update from the Board of Health. Mr. Trobridge. Larry, you want to come and sit up at the table too? Do you have a presentation?
Sorry, I don't have a PowerPoint tonight.
Okay, sorry.
I feel upstage, no.
I didn't know it myself.
Good.
I knew that, I knew this was.
You were just saying what a great job you did.
That's what you're talking about.
You're making Brian look bad, damn right. Brian, Brian, you're making Brian look bad there. We'll work on that actually, Brian.
Well, I'll come before you to give the 2017 Board of Health report. As you know, we have activities that happen at the board level, some of those are very unique and happen just through the board, some happen with the department and the employees and the team, some happen purely at their level, and some of them are a mix of both. In my report, I'm not really going to separate those out, and when we, when we have actions in town, it's a pretty broad level of activity. Some of them, we dig into them pretty deeply and some relatively superficial and sort of a quick touch to certain things. So, last year I gave you a report that talked about things we had done the previous year and things we were planning to do from that point forward, so I'll start with recapping from my 2016 to 2017 plans. So, one of the things we were planning to do, or we were doing, was helping our new director get oriented to the town director position, so that's Brian, you all know Brian. It's good that he had a quick learning curve because sometimes when it rains, it pours. We happen to have two other staff that turned over, so of a staff of four, three are new within this year. So, we had a new administrative assistant come on within the middle of the year, and she's done very well, and just recently, our longtime town nurse left, so we brought on a new town, a nurse who we at the board just met last couple weeks ago at the May meeting. In the process of bringing that person on, Brian spent time with the community, community director, working, looking, I'm sorry, reworking that job position, so that that person's new job will include a significant amount of public health outreach, such as doing certain education and, education teaching and medical care things at the senior center. That builds into some of the other things we talked about doing. We said we're going to get involved in public education sessions, so in the past year, members of our team gave a program, a teaching program at the senior center, and participated in a quite successful health fair at the senior center that I'm told was a sellout, was very popular, and only was in standing room only because it was bad weather that day, right? So, that was a day that went very well. One of the things that's talking and sort of moving across all of our boards is things and the issues that are surrounding around opiate abuse in the Merrimack Valley. Our director, Brian, serves on the Merrimack Valley Prevention and Substance Abuse Project. They've been very active in this year. They received a grant to obtain materials and supplies for local projects. They had a booth at the sheep sharing event to be able to pass out and talk to people there, and had a regional meeting at the senior center. I understand that there's an annual program coming up that will be at the Andover Vocational School this year. They also work with the North Andover School Department to apply and receive a grant of financial money to help with substance abuse prevention education in the school system. Our new town nurse will participate in those, that education as well, and at the board level, almost every meeting, we talk about various, we, informally, we talk about various topics that are related to this matter, both in terms of what's going on at the project, the various task forces that are going on in the town, in the region, at various state levels. We have on our board, we have people who are active in the Massachusetts Medical Society, Massachusetts Dental Society, so there've been sort of things that have been brought back to the board from actions that are happening, happening there. Last year, I told you that our trash truck regulations had been revised to clarify, to clarify them and to remove some of the redundancies, so that's been brought on board, and the team is working with local trucking companies, and in the past year, they've been working with the police, with the courts, and with town council on the enforcement protocol and the ticketing process to make that cleaner and neater and easier for everyone to understand so that that moves smoothly. Now, moving on to things that are looking, as far as recent projects and some forward-looking plans, every year we seem to have one entity in town that we spend a lot of time with. I said sometimes we dig very deep with certain, certain issues, so in the past year, we spent a pretty significant amount of time at several meetings, working with Royal Crest on various water and moisture control matters they were having in relation to mold control in buildings. So, they've really stepped up to the plate after a lot of conversation, and they have an ongoing project that's, that's happening at Royal Crest. We've started, we did it several years ago and hadn't had it for a while, so we restarted bringing in various speakers from the outside to educate us on local things that are happening both in the town and regionally in terms of various health-related issues. So, every year we have the director from the Northeast Massachusetts Mosquito Control District come and speak to us about actions that are going, that are going to be going on, and what the risks are looking forward into the year, and we touch, touch base with them throughout the summertime as mosquito action happens. At the last meeting, we had the water treatment plant director, he gave us a very thorough and interesting presentation, along with his chemist, about the flow of, the flow of water through the water treatment plant, and how they handle and make the water safe and clean, and actually quite a good quality in North Andover, and we've talked about bringing GLSD and wheel brader in to give us presentations and interact with us as well. At the team level, they've worked with the Attorney General's Office to renovate several abandoned properties and get them on the market. That's something that touches health matters, but also planning matters, I'm sure your matters as well, so we think that that's something that Brian has done that's really been good in the last year. As you know, we moved the department offices from 1600 Osgood to the new town hall, and that's provided a new level of public interaction, which we think has turned out well. People have a much more convenient way to come in and talk with our team and get things done. One of the big projects that we've started talking about rather informally and haven't really done anything concrete yet, but I think is something that we'll be taking on for the foreseeable future, is talking about consideration of a housing inspection protocol. There are lots of communities in Massachusetts that have inspections, inspection protocols, various permitting that goes on at the apartment and renting level, and it really seems in many places to help improve the rental housing stock in those communities. So, we've, again, at a very informal level, started talking about that. What, what we feel that does is it assures that the landlord will provide a safe and sanitary rental unit, and that the renter on his side, his or her side of things maintains a basic upkeep of the same unit. We understand that these, this sort of a project coming on board will require consideration of staffing levels, new regulatory processes, and we think that Brian's, again, sort of, a lot of these are ideas that Brian sort of, because he gets to do them, we think we may start, again, not immediately, but sort of down the road, with something along the line of a voluntary inspection so that we can sort of ply the waters on this and see how things go and what the perception level is like it. Housing complaints to us are something that, one complaint in one apartment can consume a tremendous amount of time, both at the, at the department and the town level, and I know that the town manager's been involved in certain things that had to do with housing. So, again, this is something that we think will help to improve the housing stock in North Andover so that it's perceived well as a place where people want to live. Some business-friendly things that have come on board. We're looking forward to the farmer's market, and several months ago, we were asked to and elected to weigh the inspection fees from the health department for the farmer's market, so we're all looking forward to that in a few weeks. And also, one of the things that our, our team spends a lot of time on is food and restaurant permitting, which for many years happened on January 1st, and we used to hear every year that that was a big hassle for people who were running restaurants and doing food matters for a lot of reasons, so this year we chose to move that permitting date to March from January 1st to provide easing of the matter so that it wouldn't fall in the height of the holiday season and all the issues that came along with that. And as well as that, the staff is moving to putting the application process online so that it's not all dependent on paper for, again, for many reasons, making that hopefully a smoother and easier process. There have been a few bumps as that's gone along, but Brian and Michelle are working with people and making that, that smoothing, making that transition as smooth and easy as possible. And then, last but not least, this will be my last action as the Chair of the Board of Health. Mr. Fixler will be taking over as Board Chair in the next meeting in June, so these projects are for you, Larry.
Thanks, Tom.
So, that's sort of a little bit of a laundry list, but any questions?
No, other than for the apartments and the rentals, isn't there, maybe you can answer this, isn't there already in place that are units that are three and over, you could, it's automatic or supposed to be done yearly or something? No?
No, I think the building department may have inspections for multifamily units just from a business standpoint, not from a health code or sanitary standpoint.
Okay, okay, so I'm. They're not annual.
Depend on certain vacancy levels, but they're not just annual inspections.
No, we have no, no annual inspection or permitting of housing. We take, everything we do is complaint-driven, but then it goes to National Housing Code. We, and we have some, we have, we have a local regulation that sort of has a few tweaks in it, but we don't have anything that's a permitting or a regular inspection. Everything is complaint-driven. We do get those.
I have a question about the actions we're taking around opioid abuse. You mentioned that Brian's on this Merrimack Valley group, but would you guys, would you consider the Board of Health sort of our one-stop shop for the North Andover community for information related to the opioid epidemic? If I'm a, if I'm a, you know, resident of North Andover and I fear that my child has a problem and I want to try and get help and I don't know where to go, would I go to the Board of Health, or?
Well, how much time do you have?
Yeah.
I mean, my frank answer really would be no. This opiate issue touches an awful lot of matters and a lot of entities in town, so there's a local task force that has people from the youth department to police, to fire, to licensing, to us. Health is a broad word, but I don't think we could be the one-stop shop on that because of how many issues are involved in it. It's, it's a very difficult matter. I think a lot of towns in Massachusetts are struggling and trying to, you know, there've been things that have happened at the state level. Governor Baker had a commission a couple years ago and came out with about 60 recommendations, and then there've been a lot of, of regional task force. We have a local task force that Sluckman DeColigero was involved in and helped to spearhead a bit. I think there are a lot of moving parts in it, so to answer sort of in a short matter, I'd say it depends what the question is, to be very frank with you. We can't, we don't have all the resource to handle all the matters that come up with it.
Yeah. This is just a statement for us as a board, I guess, but I feel like I've talked to a lot of residents about this crisis and their concern and what are we doing, and I know that there's a lot of groups that are doing things, you know, getting speakers, doing awareness, you know, seminars and things, and I just feel like it's kind of all disparate right now, at least from my view, just trying to look into it. I feel like there's a lot of disparate things, and we're doing a lot of great things, there's a lot of great resources available, but I don't know that people necessarily know where they are or how to get them, so just something for us to think about in terms of, is there something we can do as a community to make them more?
I wonder if Brian might be able to speak more about the project itself, because the project has actually extended to the point where they've received, they received state grant funding. I think it was cut back.
The earmark never came, correct, the earmark never came through.
Yeah, please, that'd be great.
So, just for a quick little tidbit on that, the earmark from the state never came through, that was pulled back.
I do work in a regional level right now, and we're trying to filter these things down to the local level. We have had the group come to the sheep sharing festival, they came to the senior center, they also came, they will be coming to the fall festival as well. We're trying to get down to the more local level and get more hands-on stuff where we are right now. We have a new public health nurse, she started literally two weeks ago. One of her topics that she will be working on is this particular thing, in conjunction with me and other regional groups. So, there's no, there's no funding associated with this just now, so we're looking to get regional funding. We did get a, the school department applied for a $20,000 grant for educational materials to bring into the school department, which is fantastic. So, we're starting to get there. It's a long process, I'm working on it, and I now have more staff to help me work on it.
But if someone were to call, though, you would certainly be able to refer them out.
Yes, yes.
I would imagine, I mean.
Correct, we do have materials in-house, we also do have people that we can refer them to.
Right.
Depends on the question and where they're coming from. I know the fire department does a monthly report that goes out to various people in town, so they're on it as well. I have met with them and talked to them about it on a few different occasions, so it's something that is definitely being worked. So it's something that is definitely being worked on. It's just there's a lot to do.
This might be a good article for the quarterly newsletter that goes out with the tax bill. Just to, because you can hear right here, there's a lot of confusion or a lot of questions about, and I'm sure people, you know, at home have the same questions. And maybe something just in that tax bill that goes out in our quarterly newsletter just to, you know, to give that information, who to call and, you know, those hotline numbers.
Exactly. And there's so many different facets to this issue, whether it's from prevention and education to treatment to recovery to family support and services. It takes up the entire gamut, the entire spectrum on substance abuse. So it comes on...
The one thing that the committees have seemed to zero in on, that this, you're sort of addressing, which is a good thing, don't misinterpret my comment, when it's a problem and what they seem to be saying, that the problem often gets started with people who've just had an injury and they started off on medicine and then got hooked. They, you know, I mean, even the government is saying now that they were suggesting, oh, these aren't addicting and this will help people with pain management. Now they're finding that big mistake, that they are addicting. So it's more trying to get to it before the problem starts.
And that's the education piece that we're, I think that's one of the biggest components.
But that's the medical community, but they are doing that.
And they are, they're working on it as well.
The medical community's been doing that for several years, looking at prescribers and their interaction with these things. It's a huge topic, and I caution to say, well, we're going to find one fix somewhere. It just really doesn't exist. I mean, there's a pharmacist sitting here that involves them, it involves the providers, it involves treaters, people at the prevention end. Yes, we have, we can sort of provide resource in one direction, but we're not the only town or community dealing with these issues. I mean, you can see this, you're seeing it at the federal level right now, sort of, well, who's going to pay for all this and sort of who organizes it and so on? And it may become very grassroots from a lot of different directions. I hear that when you say there's confusion, but I think that's the state of a lot of it right now.
Well, so it seems to me that, you know, I'm with Regina, because we've sat in a couple of these meetings, and it's like every, it seems like we're all trying to build a house here to get everybody in. And maybe the way to think about this is lots of doors for people enter. And instead of trying to find one way to get people into this, into dealing with this problem, there are lots of doorways in. It could be through health, it could be through the schools, it could be through these other areas. So instead of trying to, you know, pull it all together and have one kind of master approach to it, maybe it is all these ways in. And I might suggest, think about that a little bit and look at these other groups. And rather than trying to all come together as all these multiple groups, you really are coming from different perspectives. And does it really matter where somebody connects up? Because ultimately, you have the resources to guide them to the right place.
As long as they get there, as long as all those doors end up getting them to the right place and not giving, you know, have the same message, right? In the same direction.
Right, so it's about creating as many of these as we can.
So using that analogy, I think that's where we've been in the past, is that we don't want to create another door, right? I'd rather be, I'm bad on metaphors, but I'd rather be part of a funnel that brings everybody to the same spot. And so the resource that we've set at this level, we're willing to provide, is a point of contact to refer you to someone else, because it is very disjointed at this point. And so the local communities, some do, but the vast majority don't have the comprehensive resource to solve what could be any number of phone calls, which sound like the same topic when they begin, but in the end, they're not. And so what we need to find a way to do probably regionally is create that entry point where folks can contact and then go to the resource points from there. I've been probably overly critical of some of the responses, which is a human resource response by adding people when we can't put our hands around what exactly the problem is and what exactly the resources are. I don't want to necessarily contribute to that. What I want to do is contribute to some way where when folks have a question, they can go to a point and then from that point, get the answers. Because I think that's what happens now, it's very disjointed. There isn't a uniform way to respond.
I think this is a topic, obviously, that we, and Mr. Trobridge hit it right on the head. How much time do you have? We could, and we've had these discussions many times, and I think maybe it's something we want to put on the agenda for a future discussion point where we dig into it more deeply. I think, you know, it certainly is an important topic.
The only thing is the referring, I just have to say this, that if someone were to call, looking in, you would refer them out. It's almost like you have to ask permission, can I call you to see how you made out with that contact? Because you could refer it out and then they go away and nothing happens. It's almost like they need at least one more contact. Were you able to reach so-and-so?
Yeah.
That kind of thing. Because I think we could so easily lose people who reached out, but then, for whatever reason, they choose not to do anything.
More philosophically to that point, one of the struggles that I've, one of the things I've seen over 25 years, when problems go beyond traditional sort of in-border problems, the response needs to be regional or statewide. If it becomes individual communities, then it becomes a challenge. You then say, oh, by the way, we provide this service, we become the most commonplace to call. Say we're very good at whatever we do. Does that mean when someone calls from the outside, are we going to ask if they live here? So I think one of the things we've said from the beginning is we have a number of issues here, but clearly, we can all recognize there's a problem and there's an epidemic. And when there's an epidemic, by nature of it's the definition of the term epidemic, it's not border-specific. And so the response can't be border-specific. The response has to be, with a continued request for funding, either regional or statewide, the response must be beyond the individual community, or the level of service will vary depending on the community you participate in. And that's not necessarily good for the person who's making the call, seeking service. We want to get them the best service the fastest way you can.
Yes.
One thing I wanted to say, and a lot of very good points have been brought up.
What the pharmacies, they implemented about a year, year and a half ago, a prescription monitoring system, where if you go to pharmacy A, and let's say another doctor writes for a controlled substance, they go to pharmacy B, the pharmacist has to, and the physician has to, when they write it, they may not do it, but they have to look up the patient in the prescription monitoring system to find out if they've recently had any controlled substance filled within a certain timeframe. So that's one way the pharmacies get more control as to what they dispense. And I find it's working very well, because everybody's tied into one system, one server, one database, and they can see that if I've been to three different pharmacies in the same week and I got OxyContin, Xanax, or something else, they have a right to question it. And I would expect them to. I would expect the doctors to question it too, because they have the same access as the pharmacies do to the prescription monitoring system.
That's a good step in the right direction, right?
It is. It's way overdue, way overdue. And one thing I want to point out about addiction and what Brian says we refer them to, when you look at addiction, people get out of, it's so huge. There's a chemical, physical addiction, and then you have the psychological addiction. Not everybody has the same tolerance or the same addictive response to a pain pill as others. Some may take it for three or four days and they find psychologically, they just can't, they just can't stop. And they need immediate help. They need psychological help, they need prescription counseling centers to help them, they need their own physician to help them. Some people may not have that addiction, the psychological type of addiction, it's more of an obsessive-compulsive disorder. This is in my current reading. And they have drugs to help you with that, to help wean you off of that. But some people more have a chemical type of dependence. The body develops that dependence and it needs it to sustain itself. And over time, you can wean off of it and get off of it, if you need to. But it's very, very involved, a lot of psychological counseling involved, drug counseling centers, psychologists and so forth. So as Mr. Mailer said, it's, it's good if we have, you don't want to send, have 50 different areas you send people to. It would be nice to have a central or regional-type information out there that we can refer people to. And we can't get too-too involved, because then you have patient privacy regulations that would kick in, HIPAA regs. So we do have to be kind of careful how far we follow up down the road. So a lot of good points were brought up on that. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Mr. Fixler and Mr. Trobridge. Thank you very much for your updates tonight. And again, thank you for your service on the board. How many years were you Chair?
I know, I was wanting to ask.
Over 10, I'll leave.
Over 10. Well, you're staying on the board, right? You're just rotating the chair at this point, hopefully?
For the current term, yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
And Mr. Fixler, thank you for your service and your, and good luck in your role as Chair.
Thank you very much.
Coming up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay.
Nice to have Dr. Trobridge.
Yes.
All right. Next on the agenda, we're going to review our upcoming or the remainder of 2017 meeting schedule. We're going to have one meeting in July on the 17th, and then two in August on the 14th and the 28th, two in September on the 11th and the 25th, two in October on the 16th and the 30th, night before Halloween, two in November on the 13th and the 27th, and one in December on the 11th. So that's our proposed meeting schedule right now. I'm not sure what day Thanksgiving is.
I know, it's just Thanksgiving.
Well, it's got to be the Thursday prior, right? It's the Thursday prior.
This is the Monday after, that's true.
Yes, the Monday after, that should be okay. That meets the requirements, yeah.
We spent hours deliberating over this.
Monday afternoon.
Yeah, it's got to be the Monday after, because if it was only...
It's the Monday after.
Yeah. So this is the schedule. If anybody has any conflicts, you know, let us know if you know them now, or, I mean, you know them tonight, but let us know now in advance, as much as advanced as you can so we can work the schedule. But this is what we'd like to propose, and we don't have to vote on this, but this is the schedule that we're going to move with going forward.
The new members, it can be changed, or the date can, could be Tuesday. We try to make sure that everyone can come to a meeting.
Okay.
Just to keep you on.
So any questions or comments on that at this point?
I will not be able to attend the July meeting on the 17th, that I know.
Okay, so we have some other conflicts in that month too, so we'll have to, why don't you send me your schedule and let me know what dates you can make, and we'll see if we can work something out? Because we, you know, obviously, we want to have you here. So if you can, if we can work something out, just send me your schedule and we'll try to work something out. Okay. Next on the agenda is Race Amity Day, Amity Day, I'm sorry. Mr. Mailer, would you like to speak to this one?
Sure. There is, containing your package is a proclamation, and there's also a memo to me from Kathleen Keenley, who's the library director. There's a state proclamation, which happens to align with the North Andover's RACE values, the values that have been adopted by the school district. And attached to that is a proclamation. And so we're making you aware of that proclamation. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if someone wants to read it or just identify that...
I was going to ask the clerk if she wanted to read that proclamation.
Oh, okay.
She has the glasses on, it's good.
I've got better glasses than I've had recently. Commonwealth of Massachusetts proclamation, whereas Massachusetts supports the great seal of the United States of America, which bears the inscription, e pluribus unum, which translates from Latin as "out of many, one." And whereas the greatest asset of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is its people. And whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is comprised of multicultural, multi-ethnic, and multiracial citizens. And whereas friendship, collegiality, civility, respect, and kindness are commonly shared ideals of the collective citizenry of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And whereas the Tordes e pluribus unum initiative was invited, has invited communities across the United States of America to join in an introspection and reflection of the beauty and richness of the diverse peoples of this great nation, while reaching out with a spirit of amity towards one another annually and on the second Sunday of June. And whereas H. 2745, Chapter 163 of Acts of 2015 of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts establishes the second Sunday in June annually as a Race Amity Day. Now therefore, I, Charles D. Baker, Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim June 11, 2017, to be Race Amity Day and urge all of the citizens of the Commonwealth to take a cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance. Given as the Executive Chamber in Boston this 23rd day of March in the year of 2017 and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 241st, and this was signed by His Excellency Charles D. Baker, Governor of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Karen E. Polito, Lieutenant Governor, and William Francis Galvin, Secretary of State. God save the Commonwealths of Massachusetts.
Excellent job.
I saw that at the bottom, that was pretty cool. As my mother would say, every day should be, we all need to be nice to one another day, but it's good to put it in writing.
Well, thank you. Any comments or questions?
Thank you for springing that on me at the last minute.
You've got to always be on the ready. Okay, all right, so moving on to, oh, I'm sorry, anybody else have any communications and announcements? Mr. DeColigero, would you like to plug the farmer's market coming up?
Farmer's Market, June 25th, opening day, every Sunday.
Opening day.
10 to 2 at First Street, all the way through October 8th.
So First and Main? But all the way down First?
First, so along First and Main, just on First. So Main Street will not be obstructed, so.
Okay, I get it.
Anything else coming up?
Our AAA bond reading was reaffirmed. I communicated that out to the board.
Excellent, congratulations on that. Congratulations to the whole town on that. That's great. Any others, communications, announcements? Okay, we'll move on to consent items. First on the agenda is a request from our fantastic North Andover Emergence Association to use the Town Common and Close Massachusetts Avenue from Osgood Street to Academy Road on Saturday, September 23rd, 2017, from 9:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And this, of course, is for the Fall Festival, which is our fourth or fifth, fifth?
Fourth one on the common.
Fourth one on the common? Why don't you come up? President of the Emergence...
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recruit myself as a member of the Board of Directors for both this article, or, excuse me, for both this item and the next item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you for making that known.
This will be our seventh year on the common, if we're approved. I believe it's our seventh year annually that we've been running the Fall Festival. Each year, we raise money for different charities. We've supported Everyone's a Player, we've supported some of the charities, the property where we first used to hold...
The Knights of Columbus.
The Knights of Columbus charities.
The children's charities for the Knights of Columbus.
We raised money to purchase computers for the middle school STEM program. We also started a sports scholarship fund of our own to fill the gaps in where the others can't, where the boosters can't fill in, where Everyone's a Player can't fill in. So as an example, we've purchased equipment for students, we paid for travel arrangements for a student and a parent, and for hotel and airfare when they have found out that they've made it to state or national championships, but not having enough money to have put that money aside or to raise the money. We've been able to help out people who needed the help to do so. We paid some fees, things like that. So if anybody's not familiar with the Fall Festival, we do a lot of fundraising, there's a lot of events there for the children, as well as a lot of vendors, food vendors, jewelry makers, just about anything you can think of, crafters, all of it. It's a good time. We've been very blessed that every year we've had this on the common, the weather has been absolutely perfect. So yes, it's pretty straightforward what we're asking to do, the same thing we've done every year. We'll need access to the common at 7 a.m. so we can set up a lot of our attractives, attractions before all the crafters start coming in. We also would like to have access to the common the night before, because we paint on the grass the areas where everybody will set up in the morning, so it creates a lot less confusion. And in years past, the Public Works Department has put a spigot on one of the hydrants so that we can water the horses and any of the dogs that are out there, and they also provide the extra garbage cans.
Again, North Andover Emergence Association, a fantastic organization in this town, they just did their gala, right? A couple of weeks ago?
That's correct.
And again, gave out, what, three scholarships?
They gave out two $2,000 scholarships. We're talking next year on either doubling them or increasing the number of scholarships.
Those are scholarships for high school seniors going to college to study business.
Yeah, in a business-associated field, so whether it be accounting or business management, anything along there.
Great, okay. So do we have a motion?
Alert that the Board of Selectmen approved the request of the North Andover Emergence Association to use the Town Common and Close Massachusetts Avenue from Osgood Street to Academy Road for the Fall Festival on Saturday, September 23rd, 2017, from 9:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Second.
Second. A motion, a second. A motion and a second, all those in favor? Or any discussion, any further discussion, any further comments, discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? You're all set, thank you for coming in.
Thanks, guys. Always a good job. Keep going. Thanks, Hannah.
Okay, continuing along with some additional events in North Andover, we have, as we mentioned earlier, the Farmer's Market coming up, and to that end, we, there's a request by Chris Allen to place some banners on our poles around town to advertise for that event.
I just made up someone who saw already your packets, but there's some additional ones, Mr. Mailer said, can you...
Sorry. If I'm getting autistic, it's a problem, no?
Anyways, just, these are, these are examples of what the 38 banners would look like. The banners are two by four, they're going to go around the common, a little bit down Osgood. And anyway, the reason I wanted to show you these is because I wanted to assure you that this basically is the design of the banner, there, you wouldn't see anything different than what you have in front of you. I don't really think there'll be any more tweaks between, hopefully you, you will agree that we can hang the banners and put the, we'll put those to print very quickly. We'd like to have them up as soon as possible. Have you thought of putting them on Main Street as well? Because you can do it on the telephone poles. Believe me, I know. I think, it's a, it's a possibility, I suppose. There are other ways that we're going to be displaying, I'll have to add still, maybe some, some, what's that? Oh, that's right, because of the flags. We didn't want to compete with the, the flags on Main Street through the, through the holidays, you know, the, the actual American flags. So how long will they, how long will they stay up, then? These will go, these will stay up until October. So it would be from, as soon as we can, right through October, which would be the last, October 8th is the last day. They, they stay up till the 4th of July, they should come down. Yeah. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. We could do more and replace them. And then, and then they don't go up again till Veterans Day. So there is a window, if you want to think about it.
You could add some additional ones. Maybe we should consider that in our motion tonight as well, to include...
There, there might be some more, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, she's...
Because there will be other things on Main Street, too, in, Main Street and the plaza there. We'll have some banners within the plaza itself. Tina Messina has agreed to allow us to use her poles, and those are differently shaped, they're narrower and longer, about like three by 84. I don't know if you've noticed, when you go into that parking lot, they always have banners right now, I think it's a floral banner. But we're going to have our banners up there, too, so that will be one other place. Oh, so they will be there? So they will be within her parking lot. And I think that the Lowell Five kiosk will probably have something within there, they're one of our sponsors, obviously, as you can see from the banners. So there will be something there. But I, you're, you're right, Mr. Sleckman, Smiley, we should take that into consideration. But these are beautiful, too. Oh, thank you, thank you very much. No, they're beautifully done, and you know what? Well, I think, thank you very much. When, when the banners have gone up in the past, and it's been a while, people love them, and they do, they really do dress up the downtown as well. No, you, you, that's a very good point, it really is. So, you like them?
I agree, I think it'd be really nice to have them downtown if you can. I mean, I agree not competing with the flags.
How many, how many are there downtown? About, I believe 33. But you can skip poles, too, or just do one side of the street.
Mr. De Kelliger, you recused yourself, don't it? Didn't know if you'd run out and count the poles.
No, but I'm pretty sure, I'm, no, I'm pretty sure it's 33, because I... Okay, so that would be, that would almost double the amount.
They run all the way down to the...
We'd have to go to our...
Yeah.
I was going to say Dawn Laff, she's the one who's going to be doing our signs. They're great, I mean, she's been so helpful. But again, you could skip, you know, do a pole, skip a pole, or just do one side of the, I'm telling you, it would really make downtown look great. They'd be pretty, because they're very, they're very colorful. So I'm hoping that they translate well to, to the larger signs, so...
We can sort as the flags come down, we can certainly work with you to...
Okay. It's a good excuse to get them down, sometimes we just leave them up, and then they, they look great, but they fade and rip. Yep, yep. So it would be great to...
Just from a resource perspective managing, it's nice when we can do them all at once, but, but I think it'd be great to have them on Main Street.
And by the way, we're counting on rain our first day, just saying, we're going to get that jinx right out of the way.
There you go. Okay, do we have a motion?
Great.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of Chris Allen on behalf of the North Andover Farmer's Market to hang banners, as we've discussed, around town and Main Street, around the Town Common and on Osgood Street from June through the beginning of October.
Okay, we have a motion, a second?
Second, with a friendly amendment to Mr. Allen to do downtown. Oh, you said that, I'm sorry.
Chris, I like the peppers, by the way, it's nice.
So, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, you're all set, thank you.
And now we've got to get too bad, Dawn Laff.
Thank you for coming in.
Great.
Thanks.
Yeah, you can get her, you can get her printing those things out now, right?
No, they're really nice.
I like the peppers, I like them.
I like the friendly turkey.
I would rather, well, the turkey, that's our logo, so you're going to see more of the turkey than anything else. I'm rather partial to cabbage.
And for those new to the community, this used to be called Turkey Town.
I know, that's why.
I, I know, but some people don't get why we have turkeys all over the place.
I know, not everybody likes being called Turkey Town.
Couldn't be because we have turkeys all over the place, would it?
I kind of like it. Yeah, but if you know the history, it's fun. But if you don't know the history, it's crazy. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Next on the agenda is acceptance of grants. We have two grants that have been awarded to the town of North Andover. First is for the Community Compact Information Technology Grant in the amount of $50,000. Mr. Mailer, do you want to say a few words on that?
Certainly, we applied to the Community Compact Program for information technology grant amounts this year. I think the Commonwealth gave out a total of $2 million, we received $50,000. We're continuing our project to digitize or make electronic as many records as possible, in this case focusing on our land use boards, the departments, the Community and Economic Development Department specifically, especially those records which, which have to be held in perpetuity, some of our building records go back a hundred years. So the ability to digitize those and keep them in someplace which is safe and be able to retrieve ultimately, our goal is that for, I think it was mentioned that we're going electronic on health permits, as an example, we're doing the same on building permits, conservation. Ultimately, the hope is you'll be able to click on one map, find a property, and find everything about that property that is a public record, including any permits that have been with, been pulled on that community, on that particular site dating back to when we're required to hold the record. So ultimately, we're going to digitize everything, this $50,000 takes a step toward that path, so one map and everything from voting districts to bug licenses, to property IDs, to assessing records, to building permits, to everything drilled down onto each...
It's really great. Other communities, some, not too many have that, and it would be great.
It's really great, yeah.
Great.
The $50,000 will help toward that effort.
All right, so do we have a motion? We'll take these one at a time, I guess we can talk about the next one.
Move that the Board of Selectmen accept the grant from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue in the amount of $50,000.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further comments? Laurie, you the one that applied for this grant?
This is Chris, which one? One or two?
Number one.
One is Chris, two is Laurie.
Well, thank you, Chris McLaure, for taking the initiative to apply for that. I know he's not here tonight, but hopefully he watches the recordings every Tuesday morning, so...
He does, I know that he does, yeah.
So thank you, Chris, for applying for that. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next one is Massachusetts Office on Disability Grant in the amount of $8,988.
This is the 2016 round of funding, actually fiscal '17, so it ends at June 30th. There's a grant that Laurie prepared to allow for electronic release of the back lower door, handicap release off that back door. We've got a lot of comments that folks would have an interest in doing that, and although it's not a requirement under the handicap, Access Code under ADA, that is something that we've got a lot of feedback for over the years. So Laurie applied for that grant, and we received the grant, and that will be installed by the end of this month.
By the end of what?
Month.
Oh, great.
This is, this is fantastic, I was really, as you know, I was delighted to see this, because I did talk to seniors and others who really, really wanted sort of easier access. Like you said, we were compliant, this is fantastic, Laurie, great job. I mean, it's a real quality of life issue for some of our citizens, and I think it's, like, I was, when that email came through, I was thrilled, so thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Thanks, Laurie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right.
If you can, sorry, Mr. Chairman, it should be noted, over the last two to three months, we've received in excess of $400,000 in grants.
I was going to say, I feel like we're...
Yeah. On a grant roll.
It's good, it's a good thing to...
It's great, yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a, to vote to sell general obligation bonds of the town to approve funding, refunding of general obligation bonds. So, Mr. Mailer, do you want to speak to those at all?
Do you want me to read? Can I borrow a glass?
We would have to read the entire thing.
Have to read the entire thing.
How many is this? I think this is just one.
There's only one page of it.
You ready?
There you go.
If you want, I'll read the motion, if you guys will adopt it. Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the sale of the $7,135,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2017 bonds of the town dated June 15th, 2017, otherwise known as the bonds, to Jenny Montgomery Scott LLC at the price of $7,502,735,055, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. Bonds shall be payable on June 15th of the year and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. 2018 is a 2% rate at $600,000, 2019 through 2022 is a 3% interest rate at the amount of $600,000, 2023 at $385,003%, 2024 through 2027 is $375,000 at 3%, 2028 through 2037 is $225,000 at 3%. Further approve that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of the notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 22nd, 2017, and in a final official statement dated June 1st, 2017, otherwise known as the official statement, these in such form as approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further approve that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the official statement. Further approve that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15, subsection C-212, in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further approve that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update such procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds. Further approve that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk and the town treasurer, be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
You have a career as an auctioneer, and you're a fast reader.
Is that it?
That's the... That's the motion.
So that's the motion made on behalf of, of the town clerk?
Of me.
Oh, the, the board, clerk of the board, I should say. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or further discussion?
So these were funded last year's capital plan.
That's great.
And a refunding means a refinancing, so any refunding bonds means we're funding a lower cost of capital, and we're refinancing those bonds.
And better do it now, before they go up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so if you hadn't seen an email, please stick around, we have a lot of signing to do after the meeting. We have to sign each one of those, so... Okay. E is to vote to approve a letter for Mass Housing Partnership for 505 Sutton Street Housing Project. So, as we know, there's a proposal for a project at the old Knights of Columbus site for a 40B, and the town is obligated to send us a response to the state, listing our, in this case, our concerns about that project and the size. If you've gotten a chance to read through the letter, are there any comments on that or anything that you'd like to see done differently, or is that letter good to be sent? Is really what's before us tonight.
So we can add to that, we did a site visit with a developer and representatives from the state, so various departments and I met in the site, reviewed the site, part of what you see in terms of a letter came as a function of that site visit. I know that your folks were also giving up to 10, but it wasn't the middle of the day. This is not an uncommon letter, this is a very common letter, all the kind of response, it's pretty consistent with the type of response we would have expected or would have seen on Berry Street, give or take, every project is different. But again, this is our ability to communicate to the state, and it concerns we may have about the project.
But this isn't, it's not a binding letter, so that it is an opportunity for perhaps some other changes, it doesn't...
So what's the, what's the horizon for the, what kind of response and kind of, how does this kind of flow, what's the timeline? Because I'm...
I'm happy that we've discussed before, that's what I was just making sure.
This is just our response, so they've started a process, I'm sorry, they've started a process, and the first stage in that process is that the state will evaluate their application to see if it's compliant. So they've notified the state that they have an interest in developing this site in a certain way, the state then notifies that, I think the letter goes to the chamber, we distribute the letter, basically says, do you have any feedback to provide us? We've given that feedback. If you mean a general timeline, if this project were to proceed, from now until delivery, would be as much as 12 months, before construction begins, it takes that long. There'll be several zoning board meetings, anytime you have a 40B application, a comprehensive permit, it goes through multiple, we're not even at the stage of really design development drawings, but when they have those, they proceed with the zoning board application. Berry Street was a little bit different example, but Berry Street seemed to go on for a year, it was at least, it was pretty close to that, multiple meetings over multiple months, till ultimately, there's a recommendation made, or comprehensive permit approved, that goes to the state for approval, and construction begins. So we're not really that close to construction in this particular case, that these projects take longer to get through the sort of regulatory embedding stage.
And I can tell you, as a former member of the zoning board, that it does take a long time to get through these projects, and they really go through them very, very detailed, and it takes them multiple meetings to get through them all.
It doesn't...
So it could be a long process.
Okay, any other questions?
Do we have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the letter to the Massachusetts Housing Partnership for the proposed 40B development at 505 Sutton Street.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a, an appointment for Dr. Frank McMillan as the town physician, and...
Junior.
Dr. McMillan follows his father's footsteps as the previous town physician, so this is a great honor, I think, to be able to do that, to follow in his father's footsteps. Any, oh, do we have a motion, I guess?
Move approval.
A motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion or comments?
Mr. Tim Inger, would you mind just elaborate more on what the responsibilities of Dr. McMillan are?
Yes, primarily, in a community like North Andover, can vary depending on the nature of the community, but primarily in North Andover, if you're issuing, for instance, the nurse wants to give the flu shot, someone has to write and ask the prescription, and therefore you need a doctor to sign on those kinds of items. There can be other involvement of a town physician, but in a loose sense, that's the primary responsibility.
Thankfully, we have the chairman of the Board of...
I don't think you get sick.
Yeah, yeah.
No, the town physician essentially is the sign or at the MD level of vaccinations, various things that the nurse or other staff do to provide essentially medical authority under a license that moves to you as the town, but you have to have someone who's officially appointed to that.
Right. In our case, it doesn't have to be a member of the Board Health, but we have someone that serves in both capacities.
Correct. Dr. McMillan Senior was town physician without being a member of the Board for 10-plus years. He's now essentially fully retired, but it covers, you know, again, prescription, signatures, emergency situations, there's not, he doesn't have regular office hours or anything like that in town.
No.
Great. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And as usually, we thank Dr. McMillan for his service to the town in many capacities that he's served, so thank you, sir, and we appreciate your service. Okay, next on the agenda, we have, moving into licensing, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I motion that we move into licensing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now in licensing.
We are in licensing, so on this evening's agenda, we have a request from Kate Bedeau. I don't know if Kate's here in the audience who wants to speak to that request. So, it seems fairly straightforward, it's for an application for a one-day license on Saturday, the 24th, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Stevens Coolidge Place. Again, it's a one-day wine and malt license. Any discussion? Right here, motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion made in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none, it passes. The next item on the agenda is a request from Christina Portala, doing business at Auto Empire Motors for a Class II license at 800 Turnpike Street. Christina's here, would like to speak.
So, I want to open out this space on 800 Turnpike Street. It's just for Auto Empire Motors, it's going to be a wholesale dealership, so it's just for paperwork, there's going to be no cars sold on the premises.
Whereabouts is 800? What's a landmark near there?
It's across from Flagship. Across Chestnut Street from the Academy.
Okay, okay, that's where it is.
Where? Sorry.
It's on Chestnut Street, it's across from, like, the flagship drive in the Willows.
Cross from Willows.
Yeah.
Both flagship Willows, across the street.
The Willows.
It is the Willows or...
Those office condos.
Exactly, yeah, in the brick, the brick building, yeah.
Yep, so there's no cars, just office. Right, yep, just paperwork.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
Motion made, second.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Very late.
So, the next item on the agenda is, we have 11 requests from Smolak Fund. Smolak, every year comes before us with their Women Farm to Table series, as well as this year, it looks like they're celebrating their 90th farm anniversary in the barn, so...
Yes.
The licenses are all-day wine and malt licenses ranging from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. on all 11 dates, for June 17th, June 21st, June 28th, July 12th, July 19th, July 26th, August 2nd, August 9th, August 16th, August 23rd, and then it looks like I jumped ahead to a July, there's a July 12th.
There's duplicate.
Farm to...
Duplicate.
No, July 12th, that's the first time it appears, right? Oh, no, you're right, okay, so it's only, there are only 10 licenses, excuse me.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of all those dates as you just read.
I'll second that.
Motion made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, those pass. So, the last item, last item on the licensing agenda this evening is, at our prior meeting, we had talked about, perhaps it was even two meetings ago, we had talked about the work our town council had done with going through our alcoholic beverages regulations and how we impact, or rather, what the impact is on business owners and what the expectations are from license holders. She had produced a draft that we've had in our disposal, at our disposal for the past several weeks, and I think it was an opportunity really for us to solicit feedback from residents. I don't know if there are any residents here to speak this evening, know about the license, but I took it as also an opportunity to reach out to more business owners to ask about what had been drafted, so I've not done this before, so I don't know if the preference would be to have town council up to speak to answer questions, or...
Well, I guess the question I would have is, what's the, you know, what's the primary changes, I read through the changes, there were a lot of changes in there, it looked like there was some renumbering, it looked like you added a section to more detailed one-day malt and wine licenses, and cleaned up some of the hours a little bit that were probably older than what the state legisl, regulations currently allow for.
Executive summary.
What's that?
So, the executive summary.
Okay, can you give us an executive summary?
So, the regulation for updated to comply or to meet the new regulations from the state law that changes to state law, and so, you're right, they changed the, essentially, the hours of operations from the retail stores. There's also, we included the fingerprint provision, that's compliant with the town bylaw, and there was a provision for fire safety that was added, that's part of the inspection of the premises for a license. I can cite to the particular sections if you want me to, or is this a broad overview?
Let me just, I have my opinion.
Okay, all right. And then I did rearrange the regulations so that it was more accessible, so you can go to the particular sections of each type of license, and then you can look at it that way. But essentially, those are the only changes that are sort of relevant to the regulations. Now, because I've done this, then people have looked at it, and they've said, "Oh, well, what about this section? I know that there's some questions have come up." And a lot of that is with regard to provisions of the regulations that were in place already, but now that we've been going through this exercise, more people have sort of looked at the particular sections and have raised questions about those.
So, have there been any questions from business owners? You said you socialized it with them.
So, I tried to reach out to businesses that come to us for licenses for events, that have packaged stores and that have pubs in the community, and there was some feedback. I think that the copy that's in our agenda, there was a formatting issue, it was just that we have to add section 32, 31 and 32 under section B, but the three pieces that were brought up to me was, the first was a corkage fee, so we prohibit business owners from allowing, if they have a license where they could drink on premise, you couldn't bring a, like, you couldn't bring your own bottle of wine if the business would allow it, it wouldn't matter because our regulations would prohibit it, and so I felt like that might be something worth discussing. The feedback was from business owners, why not allow that? And it's at the discretion of the business owner where they can choose to charge the fee, they still have to be responsible for the consumption of that alcohol, and so that was one point that...
In looking further into that, that is actually prohibited under the ABCC regulations, yes, in the frequently asked question...
If they have a license.
Yes.
They can't have both.
Exactly.
You can't brown bag and have a license.
Right.
That's why most brown bag regulations included, include a fee, so that the, so that the businesses who are paying the license don't feel disadvantaged, though if you had a brown bag regulation, they often carry fees with them, so that there's at least some cost of entry, so you don't have a licensed establishment and a brown bag establishment one costing $2,000.
Is that the case? Because we identify it in two sections in here, is that the case for both?
So, for club licenses, it's different.
Okay. Because that was...
And that you can have, you can brown bag it, but that's a $30 corkage fee, and that's under the statute. So, there is a fee, so if you wanted, if you wanted to change that regulation, I suggest that we would sort of amend that entire section and add the requirements of the state law.
I mean, that's what this, there's no obligation for us to have to vote tonight, because I think that, I think some of these things require reflection. I feel like it was a good discussion and worth considering that, because I don't think that that's necessarily a change without consequence, one way or another.
The Board did on two other occasions in the last couple of years have sort of a casual conversation about brown bag, well, I'm calling it brown bag, sorry, that's not what I know. It came up under, trying to recall the circumstances, but it had come up in the Board's general opinion on it, at the time was, there's not sort of critical mass to do it, there's some folks doing it, but that, should we have a regulation which governs that, the Board generally wondered, I don't want to isolate businesses, but I think there's at least there was one at the time, there may be a second one now operating with a bring your own. So, the question always is, do you feel like this critical mass matter, or does it create a competitive disadvantage to have folks just be able to allow that?
So, that regulation, just for my own clarity, that would allow an establishment that doesn't have a liquor license, regardless of what it, I mean, that serves food, to allow a patient to bring a bottle in, and for a corkage fee for doing, so let's, I'm going to take a wild example, Heavenly Donuts, okay? So, if someone wants to bring a bottle of wine into Heavenly Donuts for their afternoon sandwich...
Irish coffees.
Yeah, you, why is everyone looking at Dawn back there?
That's very bad.
So, is that, so would that be an allowed use? Would that be something that they could do?
Yes. So, what most towns have done, if they're going to have, to write to have BYOB, which is what is, you bring your own bottle, I guess, you enact regulations relating to that, to the BYOB provisions, that discuss how and where and when that a restaurant can operate in that way.
And we do have a business that, that is kind of...
And so...
Uncharted territory for us right now.
Exactly, well, presumably.
They're not under any regulation.
Yeah.
And the Board's conversation in the past was, just saying in the past, and this is more, I wish I could identify that number of times, but say two years, was, well, it's one occasion or it's two, not occasion, it's one location or two location, doesn't seem worth enacting legislation, right, legislation or regulations for that. So, that's a question, when, when do you feel it's time to do that, if at all? Because they can do it now, there's just no regulations.
So, maybe it's a good opportunity to add that, some, to put some guidelines.
And I can be clear about that, just to get to the Irish coffee or whatever kind of drink we're talking about, this is not hot alcohol. It's hot alcohol?
Sure.
It's only veramont.
Sorry, true.
So, like those painting night things where you can go paint a canvas and bring a bottle of wine, that's like an example of what this would apply for?
That's an example of the current, current area that's operating.
I figured it probably would.
Very good, that's good. I didn't want, you did a good job leading me there, yeah. That's currently an example of an unregulated establishment as it relates to this.
So, I don't recall, were those, were there some verbiage in here about, like, the brown bag situation?
Not about those, no, not about the non-licensing holders.
So, this is a completely separate issue than what's before the Board at this moment. What's before the Board is really just a reorganization and updating of the liquor licensing regulations as pertaining to licensees, the application process and how those businesses are conducted, and the enforcement provisions for any type of penalties for violation of the licenses.
Okay. So, that would be a discussion for another time?
Yes.
If we were to draft those. Okay, I think they look good.
Other examples were, one of the convenience store owners made a point that if you look under section D, subsection four, so that's page 16, there's a requirement, and this is reflective of our existing policy, right, I don't have the redline version, but this is, under convenience stores, any grocery or and/or convenience store which is a holder of a packaged goods store, which is open on Sunday, must during any time that the store is open when alcoholic beverages, beverage sales are not permitted, by means of a drop curtain, a wire mesh divider, or a gate at least five feet high, feet in height, excuse me, closed off from the rest of the premise that section, and so I think that we should reflect on convenience stores that sell alcoholic beverages, I think that we should reflect on those other not convenience stores, but that that would apply to, and is that currently the case, and is that something that is practical to apply to our business owners? Because as the case was made to me was, they can police that at their checkout anyways, where if someone were to come and try to purchase the alcohol, they'd be in violation of their license anyways, if they approved of such a sale before that time. And so, that was an interesting thing to reflect on, because I don't know that I've ever seen any type of barrier erected in any, I mean, I guess I would ask my colleagues, we all live in town.
Stop and shop.
Stop and shop's a little, little bit of a different store, though.
And there are some establishments that have the pull-down curtains, that when they, you know, outside the hours. I mean, I don't, it's, to me, it's just like, I think you're right, I mean, they just, they prohibit it at the register, the curtain is, I don't know if it's just like, you know, curtailing with temptation or something, I don't know what it was, I'm just saying, you know, it's, you can't even look at the candy in the candy store? I don't know.
I mean, that's, again, this was something that, it would be a change, and it's worth reflecting on as a Board, and again, I don't think that any motion needs to be made tonight on any of this, but I, after getting feedback, this was something that was identified as, not really so much as serious, as kind of goofy, because we, it sounds like we don't enforce it consistently, and it sounds like it could be, it can be cumbersome for some businesses the way that they're set up.
Actually, if you recall, I think the pharmacy up on 114, we had a discussion about having software that would not allow the sale of alcohol on the register when they go to scan it, that during the off times, it wouldn't even accept it.
Is that the one, you're talking about the Rite Aid cross drive?
Yeah.
Okay, so that was before.
I don't know if they ever did that, but that was a discussion that we had, but I think they have, because we told them they needed the drop curtains, so they, they were building out from scratch, so they were able to do that. So, your question is whether we want to keep this in there, or...
Is there a, I guess this would be good guidance for us to walk away from, is there a feeling that the final piece that's presented, would we like this to be kept or removed? I know that we spoke about this at length, Suzanne, I don't know if you want to make any...
How many differences did you send this through?
So, I made it publicly available, and of course, we made it through our agenda distribution, but I made a point of trying to have an actual conversation and getting actual written feedback from one convenience store owner, one pub owner, and one event holder. I mean, I'm kind of disappointed that it, it doesn't seem like there was that much of an interest by throwing it out there and trying to get feedback, because this has been something we've been working on for months, and it was only until it was actually put on the agenda that we actually even started to get responses to it, so, again, I thought it was an interesting take on that, because I don't think that, I think when we sit around at a Board meeting, we hear it and we think, okay, that sounds like a good idea, and it was just interesting to hear the business's perspective on how that impacts their general operation, which would kind of lead me into actually my final, the final thought that I had, which is probably the most worthy of discussion, but we have in our section...
Before we leave that one, can I just ask, Suzanne, is there any state regulations around that kind of a barrier or burdens or anything?
So, I just recently looked at that, and I have not seen anything, but I don't necessarily feel like my research has been completely thorough on that, because it is, I know that local boards have authority to regulate in how they want to, but I'm not positive, so I can't really give you a yes or, a straight yes or no answer to that right now.
My feeling is that it seems very unnecessary, I mean, they, it's, if they, I mean, what's the point, I guess? I mean, they have to pull it down, they could also just choose not to, I mean, to follow the law and not sell it, you know what I mean? Like...
Yeah, I mean, if we wanted to really, a curtain is kind of just a, you know, it's just blocking the view, if we really wanted to put in a regulation, we would say that it has to be locked.
Yeah, right, exactly, that's what, that's my point, like, you're just like, not letting people look at it, like, really, what's, that seems sort of, you know, to me.
Yeah, if you're setting up a lock system, that could be thousands of dollars.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, just aesthetically, I was thinking like, even, yeah, what exactly, I don't know. And then the curtain issue, which, you know, somebody goes behind the curtain, then what hap, it just...
Right.
One pointed out to me, I was like, well, that actually, I felt like it was, I agreed with the business owner, but I think that this is a Board decision, I mean, that was, that was my opinion.
It sounds like one of those, you know, crazy laws sort of a thing, you know, if you do know in Massachusetts, you had to have a curtain in front of, on Sundays.
No silly string.
That would be in North Andover.
Right. Don't we have one about moshes?
Silly string.
No, silly string and lasers, I think it would be.
Silly string.
Silly string was a big problem in the establishment.
Yes, we kept the bylaw for 30 years.
It was also for parades, because it can get into the instruments or something.
350.
But there was one thing about, there was something silly about moshes and lasers or people, it was like, is this real?
And so, the final point was on page 11, and it actually goes onto page 12, subsection 32, and it's under violations, and it says that any time the police are called to a licensed premises, the license C, meaning it would be the business owner who'd be responsible to notify us of the incident, including the name, address, name and address of the individual or individuals involved, the date, the time of the incident. That's, I don't know if there was much, when I reflected on it and spoke to the business owners, the point that was made to me was if the police are already responding and enforcing our, our regulations and our expectations, then the police should be sending us the information anyways, and we create this, we create potentially this conflict where the business owner, if they don't notify us, if the police are called, because of course, they'd assume they're interacting with the town, they're interacting with law enforcement officials, that if for whatever reason they don't notify us, then they are in violation just by not notifying us, even though they've spoken with police, and so, that was, that was...
You get an annual report as part of any license renewal from the police department regarding any responses they would have made to a license.
So, it's all public record anyways, and I think that whenever there's a violation, that's kind of a run-of-the-mill question that we ask, which is, you know, if Suzanne Egan's at the book, for example, Suzanne's pub comes before us and they have a violation, I think that we would ask the officer or the witness from the police department to, you know, enlighten us for how often they have to respond, or if they've ever had to respond to incidents there in the past.
What about number 16, though? What about number sixteen though, the, are you done?
Yeah, we should close out on that one.
Yeah.
And I, that, that was, that was probably the, I want to say the heaviest one, I think that that's the one that, that, that in my opinion, didn't seem so obvious.
What do you suggest if we scratch that section of it that says that the licensee shall notify, writing the license as the agent of the incident, including the name and address of the individual involved, and date and time of the incident?
So my feeling was that we leave it to the police department as our, as, we compel the police department to report it to us should there ever be an incident where these regulations are violated, similar to how we're notified by the ABCC whenever there's a violation for, whenever they observe a violation.
So all you have to do is just scratch that whole first two sentences, right, or is one sentence? And just, or two sentences, and then just start it with the police chief shall also not, shall notify, you're writing the licensing agent and the town manager, any alleged violations of these regulations or applicable state laws?
Yeah, I think that that, that, that last sentence is worded in such a way that it could stand on its own.
Yep.
And certainly the intent is, is made clear, is that, is that the feeling of the board to move forward with?
So just remove those first two sentences?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Unless you want to include in there that they provide to us the name of, and address of the individual involved? Because that was part of what that original comment was, or the original line was that licensee shall notify and write in the license of the incident, including the name and address of the individual involved, date and time of the incident, so if you wanted to just move that under the responsibility of the police chief?
I think if we can include that from the police department, that would, I, I'm, I'm, I'm worried about. I'm sorry, Rosemary, you would, I, that was it for me.
I'm sorry, you know what, I was, I was reading this, I thought you were done, so I didn't need to cut you off. But I, yeah, I think the police department pretty much knew that anyway, it was a problem like blah, blah, blah. Yeah, so I think it, I, it makes sense, because you're right, the, the owner of the business might not think that, gee, I have to self-report or anything like that, and then they're in trouble, and who's going to self-report it? I mean, we'd have to like drill that into people's heads, you must self-report, you must self-report.
We could just say that, you know, that the police provide us with a copy of the, the incident report.
Yeah.
And that should have all the information in it.
Excellent.
So that was it for me, I didn't know if there was other feedback that we could add.
The only thing that, it was number sixteen, and it might be just because I'm only an original motor vehicle driver's license with photograph, but I believe it has to be a Massachusetts that is an actual valid form of ID. They could present a New Hampshire license, but that doesn't hold up.
That's always kind of been a question in my mind, whether it has to be Massachusetts or if it can be an out of state license as long as it's valid, I mean, and then the question of validity comes into play, right, and that's why they have those scanning machines.
Right, so yeah, that would be the only thing I would question, does it need to be Massachusetts or as long as it's a valid, I don't know, that, yeah, I'm not sure.
It's pretty crazy that we couldn't, I mean, a package store can't sell alcohol to some school?
No, 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 it doesn't mean that they can't sell, they'd have to scan it, make sure that it's valid, but they can't say, well, I checked his ID and he was from Pennsylvania, that's not a valid form. So that's why I'm just wondering, do we have to insert, I feel like I'm echoing like crazy, it's driving me a little nuts, but, so I guess just to check on that.
You're saying they can't accept it unless they scan it?
No, 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 not that either, it's not, they can't rely on that, well, I did my due diligence.
But it's not against the law for them to sell to a Merrimack College student who's twenty-one years old and from Pennsylvania, and they're only a Pennsylvania driver's license.
But the issue would be if it were, I think Rosemary's, she's made this point consistently at prior violations where...
Yeah, I never understood it.
If, if somebody who is under the age of twenty-one submits a license, that turns out to be an, obviously, because they're under the age of twenty-one, that turns out to misrepresent their age, but the license that they, the fake license they had shown was not from Massachusetts, then the vendor or the clerk could not say, well, I checked his ID and it looked right, I mean, the case, the case that Rosemary's trying to make is that that wouldn't be defensible.
Well, I understand that, I understand that, I'm just saying that, are we also saying that if a person who is twenty-one years of age or older comes into a, an establishment, presents a license from California, and it's a valid driver's license, and he's a, he or she is of age, can they accept that license, or do we say they cannot accept that license?
They can accept it at their own peril, but that's why we tell them to use the scanner, because our feeling is...
But that's why I just clarified with the scanner.
That's all.
That doesn't mean this one.
This says the only thing that shall be accepted are these specifically prescribed items. So this tells me that if someone, using Dick Valencourt's example, they would have to go off to Massachusetts and get a liquor purchase identification card and use that instead of their own life?
No, no, the first sentence says only an original motor vehicle driver's license with photograph.
With, with a change, if you say, if...
If you change it.
If you change it to say it has to be Massachusetts.
Oh, yeah, no, sir.
Because that's been communicated by the board in the past.
That's what I was asking, does this line up with the ABCC?
Yes.
Not, not specifying Massachusetts?
Right, yes.
Okay. It's a second piece to that though.
If I go to California and I give them my driver's license, I don't want them to say, no, sorry, you're not from...
Well, in fairness, they, they actually, but they can't say no.
But if we put it in here, and we say only an original Massachusetts driver's license with photograph, then that's a, we're, we're building that into our regulation, right? If we say, and I think that's what you're suggesting, only an original Massachusetts driver's license with photograph is a valid form of ID, well, other than the other parts of it, then...
Then they're breaking the law if they take it.
They're breaking this regulation.
Yes, the regulation.
It's, yeah, it's confusing, because I think what it basically is saying, yeah, you can take a driver's license from, from say, you know, South Dakota if you want, but if it turns out that it, it's not legal, you do it at your, that the, the, the store owner does it at their own peril, because how is someone going to know what a valid license looks like from South Dakota? They not necessarily would know that from here, but that's exactly it, you do it at your own peril, but if you scan it and it comes up clean, then the board is...
You have nothing to worry about.
But, but you, people can falsify Massachusetts driver's license too.
Right, I was just going to say, what if they falsify a Massachusetts license, then they're, then they're fine?
Well, that's, it doesn't necessarily mean they're fine, if it's peeling and doesn't look, I think we're over, I think we're overreading my comment, my comment.
Well, I just don't want a North Andover police officer standing outside of a package store and saying, can I see your license, oh, this is from Oklahoma, even though it's valid, there's a regulation in North Andover that says we only accept Massachusetts driver's license.
But you, so, so, but you're not, even with these regulations as they're written, me as a bartender, me as a clerk, if I choose not to ID you, Dick, I'm not breaking the law, I didn't accept any ID in that case, but I'm doing that at my own peril, you could be nineteen years old.
But that's not my argument, I'm saying if we put in, if we, if we say a Massachusetts driver's license is the only acceptable form of ID, well, I'm sorry, you're...
First of all, I don't think you can, you can't regulate further restrictions, what's being identified is the defense of the, of the liquor store owner when it's a mass license versus an outside license, that, that's not what we're talking about, these are simply your regulations, there is provisions around the defense of a liquor store if they accepted a mass license for us out of state, that, that's not the regulations, this is, from a regulatory perspective, at least I'd have questions if we can further regulate and say someone can't buy, buy alcohol if they only have Massachusetts, that's different than the, the sort of liability associated with the liquor store owner if they happen to use that, rely on the out of state, and they then don't use the scanner. That, that relates to when there's an event when someone used an out of state, they didn't double check it, then from a responsibility, liability perspective, they may very well be liable, that's different than the regulation.
Did you just check it to be sure?
I am checking, yes, I'm checking it, so essentially, that's correct, is that what, when you're talking about the identification cards, you are talking about what you can rely on, sort of, it's presumptively valid, but there's no requirement that a licensee has to check identification, right? They don't have to check the identification of somebody, but if they are going to check the identification of someone and they're going to rely on that identification, then the, in, so there's a sort of a template from the ABCC, and it says, these are the frequently asked questions, what is, what is the ID that is acceptable that they can rely on, presumptively that's valid? And those are the three, and it does actually say Massachusetts driver's license, Massachusetts liquor identification card, a passport issued by the United States passport card, or a military identification card. So you're not saying when you have that identification card, what is a valid one? You're not saying that you can only buy liquor if you have this in your hand, but what you're saying is, as Rosemary was saying, that this is the presumptively valid ID card.
So I just didn't know if it needed to be addressed somewhere in some type of language without...
It's the state law, so it doesn't here, but it is, that's the state law.
So, right, that yes, you can not ID, or you can accept a New Hampshire ID, or a South Dakota, or Louisiana, or whatever, but you do it at your own peril if it's a fake ID and you didn't scan it. That, so I just didn't know if that needed to be built in here, that's all.
But you do do it at your own peril also if it's a Massachusetts ID?
No.
No?
No, it's presumptively.
It's presumptively correct, so if someone presents a unaltered mass license...
As long as it's not altered, it looks like a, it's, it's one that they see on a regular basis that it looks like Massachusetts, that it's not a pink card or something where you would know, this is not a, you know, it's...
If it's wrong, if it's not...
But if it's not me and I'm using it, then I, I borrow someone's Massachusetts license that looks like me and I use it, just so I understand, is that person that sold me the drink using that ID guilty of a violation because they checked that ID and it's a valid ID, it's just not me?
That's at our, our discretion, as important when we, when they come before us, we get to be, we are the judge in that case, right?
Right.
If that's what we hate to get in my case.
If the person had red hair and you're blonde, which can happen these days, could be pink, you know, but...
Okay, and then in another case, if I make a fake ID that looks like a Massachusetts license and I use it, and they take it and accept it, what?
That's why we encourage everybody to get a machine in their...
Okay, Massachusetts, we don't have a machine, because that's the sake of the argument today, that they didn't use the machine.
So, Regina, this, this was a discussion, last, last fall, we had a discussion about scanners, and that the sophistication of fake IDs is such that a lot of scanners get tricked, and so I, I think that that, I think we're all human beings and we would appreciate that if somebody came to us and said, I had a scanner, it scanned and the police confirmed it.
And we've actually said that, if you showed reasonable care and it passed through the scanner, the board would take that into consideration, but if it's peeling apart, you know?
Can I slightly alter your examples? Let's do the same thing, and make it a non-Massachusetts license, then they get no presumption in that case. So the person looks sort of like you in the mass license, they're likely to have some cover in that case, but if it's a New Hampshire license, they don't.
They don't.
So the standard is higher.
They still sell to them, it's not a violation to sell to them.
So the standard's higher, and that relates really to the enforcement side if there's an issue, this simply relates to what the community should accept as identifications when people are purchasing alcohol. We're not at the enforcement part yet, we're at the regulatory part, Suzanne's talking about the enforcement part, and the standards are different on a mass license than an out of state license.
Okay. So in this section sixteen, are we talking about the...
Regulatory and enforcement.
Okay.
So are we going to leave it as written, or are we going to add the word Massachusetts?
I would strongly recommend it's left as written, this is simply your regulations, not what happens if there's an event which then has to go through a process of enforcement.
Unless Suzanne will sit up and find something.
I think we don't have to go on anything tonight, so, and I think that you already have some things that you were interested in looking at.
We'll look it up.
You, you were interested, we were interested in having a look.
I will report back.
Were there other?
Appreciate that, thank you.
Other concerns or questions? I just, I, I want to then commend Suzanne, I mean, we talk often about the resources that we have in, in our town, I mean, Suzanne has actually met with me outside of working hours, I mean, I mean, even tonight, we were meeting after four-thirty, so, I just, I wanted to say thank you and I appreciate, you know, your hard work and, and leadership from the rest of the town and just cleaning this up, because I think it provides more clarity to our business owners, so. That, that being said, again, there's no, unless I want to entertain a motion, I would suspect there's not a motion, correct, for this?
No, let's leave it, I, I think it's good to, let's get this right, you know, the idea is not to go back and keep revising, let's make it right, so it lives for a while.
I think it would be nice to make it available to any liquor holder, licensee that wants to see it, some, some sort of, but I, maybe some sort of a, a phone call or something.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, send it to them.
Why don't we just send it to them?
Send it to them or whatever.
I mean, I, I mean, I use social media, share the link, because our next meeting isn't until the end of this month, I mean, I think that there's no reason why they can't come and provide feedback, especially because the more that we're looking at it, the more comfortable I think we are with making some of these decisions with shorter notice. Do I, should I entertain the, does this need to be tabled?
No, we don't, we don't, there's no way actually taking on the vote.
And there, there is one, one housekeeping item from earlier in our agenda, we did have a list of when farm to table for small farm requests, the error with July twelfth appearing twice was because the second July twelfth should have read August thirtieth, and so I do need to go back.
Just make a motion if you could to accept the when farm on the table on August thirtieth.
Seconded, go ahead, you're second, all in favor? All opposed, here none, it passes. I, somebody walked over to me. So that is, that is, if the licensing, do I, I hear a motion to move out of licensing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So just a pointed direction, do you want us to place this on the next agenda as a vote or wait till this, the meeting in July, that Chris can't attend?
I mean, I, but first, I, I can't see why we can't have a speak for the next, the next meeting.
Next meeting is fine, two weeks?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll redistribute it.
Just want to make sure we get it when you want it.
We'll wait until a new, a new draft incorporating.
Yes, I will, I'll write a new draft.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Yep.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Okay, anything on the old business, nothing on the new business, public comment? Dan, you want to hit the public comment?
Everybody, there's more, Alex.
All right.
That's very good.
I'd like to, you know, take a, take a minute and, and thank everybody who attended the town meeting, and it was great to see, you know, so many folks in attendance, and I think I wanted to also make note that there was correspondence that we received from the Osgood Project participants to revisit the zoning in a future town meeting, and really the question raised about whether that can be done prior to the two years, and I know at the moment, town manager Mailer has, has talked that we don't have sufficient information to make a determination, and, and I think you forwarded it to, to town council Egan who's evaluating it, so, I just kind of wanted folks to know that there's more to follow, but, you know, there's this incremental step that, that's starting, and we'll wait to hear back from our town manager and, and town council on that.
Okay, great. Any other public comment, Mr. Stewart?
Actually, I have, I have, we had a lovely dedication of a bench a few days ago for Selectman Stewart for all his years of service, and it was really a, a nice event, and it's going to be a great place for you to sit and look in on those ladies in the clerk's office.
That's a little, that's a little stocky.
Okay, I reword it, but if you were there for the event, you would have seen, you would have known what we were talking about.
Yeah, they do a beautiful article in the newspaper today where they featured the photos.
They did, but...
Really good news is it's right outside our window, so you won't know what's hitting them from out the window down.
All right, so if you were there, you would see that the, Mr. Stewart visits many people in town hall, but in particular, he stops in and says hello to the people who work in the clerk's office, and the bench just happened to look right at the clerk's office, it was all for fun. So the honorable Mr. Stewart, congratulations on a great twenty-one years.
Thank you again for your service. Okay, any other public comment? Seeing no one else in the room, we'll move to the town manager's report, and per the suggestion of Selectman Keane, we are going to do a deep dive on a couple of the reports tonight, right?
Yes, the opiate report and...
The first one, the left, the opiate report and the job posting log, nothing fancy about that name, just what it's called, and some of the suggestions already made that we put gender information and age strata information were incorporated in the latest version of the opiate overdose report, helpful information, gives you some sense of what's happening. So I will answer any questions you may have, this report obviously started a little bit, I think, in our first conversation some time ago, following our meeting with the city of Methuen, the health director, myself, the, the police chief, the fire chief, Jeff Duchene, amongst others, met with our peer staff in the city of Methuen, talked to them a little bit about processes, they talked about some reporting, we came out of that and Jeff Duchene, who does a great job with reporting, by the way, and handles most of the training within the fire department, drafted something, we went back and forth internally over a period of time till it finally looked close to what it looks like today, with some, you know, additional pieces to it, and then the most recent change came with the recommendation from Selectman Keane about the age and the gender, and again, continues to evolve, I think it does tell a story, helps us a little bit. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have about the particular report and/or continue to provide feedback to the fire department about ways in which the report could be restated to be more beneficial.
I could have overlooked it, but I appreciate the thoroughness of this report. The fire department, they accept needles at the main location, is that correct or am I?
At the primary, yeah, that's what I call central station.
Did I miss that or do we have a status on the amount of?
We don't report that data.
No?
Not at this report.
Even, I would imagine they're not necessarily going through, we hope not counting them, but any idea of how frequently that box is emptied?
We just, it could be something we can provide you separate. Again, doesn't necessarily directly relate to opiate because needles could be for other uses. That's also a repository for EpiPens, for, you know, other needles that are, you know, prescribed as opposed to for this purpose, but we certainly can give you a sense of how often that happens. I'm not aware that it's very common, but at one point there was a local pharmacy accepting it as well. And I believe also our Department of Health was also accepting them at a point in time.
I have a question around, all this information obviously comes from the fire department and is specifically related to overdose calls.
Yes.
But I was wondering if there was other information perhaps from the police department, for example, that is other calls that are coming in that have a drug-related component. So how many crimes are happening from people who are on drugs? I mean, I don't know if this, I'm not asking for that piece of information right now, I'm discussing whether or not that would be interesting to have. How many, you know, DUIs are we arresting people for in North Andover that they're also using drugs? I mean, because this is telling us how many people are dying or almost dying.
Yep.
But how many people have a problem is the question, I guess, that I'm wondering. Do we have any information anywhere that we can get that helps us understand the extent of problem situations that maybe haven't gotten to the ultimate horrible, you know, point of an overdose?
Yes, great question. So the police report, and there can be more depth to the police report we provide you. The police reports break data down to some additional categories. So they off, if they happen to participate in the overdose call, there's some sort of overlap to that. They also report driving under the influence calls within the police reports, monthly police reports. They also general drunkenness that's outside of operating a vehicle. We have a category, although often if never used, on gambling type addictions, and so that data is captured. Straight drug variations from dealership, dealer, subdealer.
They'll have alcohol offenses, so these are the.
Right, I did pull that up, I didn't have it here, but.
I'm not sure that we're necessarily triaging or evaluating the data or the reports to create some of the links. So some of the links are fairly obvious to connect and some of them are more subtle. So if a person was driving, pulled over for driving under the influence, let's say alcohol, and starting under the influence could be a drug. Then the question would be, are you breaking down driving under the influence as narcotic versus alcohol? And then if you happen to find some level of prescription drugs, are we reporting in a different spot? Probably not. So the data exists, there's more data that could be added to this. There's not a lot of activity happens and it's not uncommon in town, so it's not a criticism, where someone's sort of evaluating the data, that we don't use our data into sort of, where we go into an in-depth analysis of what that data may be telling us. Other than commonly geographic barriers, if something's happening, is it common that we have, you know, if you look at the data from a geographic perspective and you looked up DUIs, guess where they are? A lot of one-fourteen stops, right? A lot of one-twenty-five stops. Primarily because we know that's where the activity is, get a lot of traffic. So if you look at it graphically, which we do as well, it sort of falls somewhere where you'd expect. Some of the robberies and larcenies obviously are in the storefronts, some of the DUIs. So, but I'm not sure if it's sort of that next level down, but we don't, we don't have data analysis staff. Some bigger communities do where they take this kind of data either from an economic development perspective or a police and fire's perspective and start to draw conclusions from the data itself. We don't, we're not that size. We don't have a management analyst of sorts that does that kind of stuff. But there are communities that really, then we'll pull the police report and say, okay, there's something about this police report that then links you to something else happening in the community. We look at trends and we look at locations of trends and typically commit resources around those kinds of things.
You talked about, well, earlier you were talking about kind of that regional approach. Is there, how are they doing in other areas? You know, there's some things they're looking at that we should be looking at, or are there other reports that other communities or regions are doing?
Yeah.
That we could compare this to?
I would say that it depends on what we're talking about, right? So I would say, so the, going back to the opiate report, that's not an off-the-shelf report. So that was, that was sort of created by us, based on feedback, internal feedback and external feedback. And I know that they produce something similar in some communities, but it would look differently. It may not look the same. I think at the time we started this, we asked to get a copy of the Methuen report. It was sort of a jumping off point, just to see if the data. I think, you know, part of that conversation, I think it was two years ago, it was a while ago, was that wouldn't it be great if all the data was reported in the same way so that someone could look at the data and draw some conclusions? As it relates to the police data reference, this comes off a system, and that system is one of the more commonly used systems statewide. So that data would be reported in a common way. The question really is sort of the next data analysis level. You got to pull the report. You got to pull the response to the opiate response. You've got to pull the police report and then take from, see if there's data within those reports which lead you in different directions or provide some context to the calls. And that's not a resource or sort of a level of depth we currently provide. So we get as far as, I think we do some data on if there are repeat occurrences on the opiate piece.
We see that.
There's some report data in there as well that talks about, that was something we added so that we'd know when folks are repeat offenders, not offenders, sorry, repeat customers, clients.
So Andrew, I saw that you had gone to the Mass Fire Chiefs Association event, the magic of Facebook. Was this a topic that was discussed on that panel as far as feedback from other chiefs and how they're dealing with it? Or any ideas that were pulled out of that meeting as far as how any of the other communities are responding?
There was not a specific conversation about this topic. I do think from an industry perspective, not unlike the change from traditional fire service in the forties, fifties, sixties, seventies to more ambulance-driven service, I think you're seeing more attention to this kind of response because it's becoming far more common, obviously, than typical ambulance, you know, calls. But there wasn't a specific conversation about this in terms of responses.
And we don't really, I mean, similar to the public health discussion, we don't know what happened to these people after the case. If they were revived by Narcan and do we know if they, we don't know if they went to a recovery place or we don't know.
We wouldn't know that. We certainly have enough data from the individual reports to know if we did a transport from that. So if we, if a person was revived and, you know, I should know this and I don't. I think at one point we were talking about if there was a response and we were administering meds, the fact that it was going to be a requirement to transport. You know, I'm certainly not an expert. I know the regulations have changed. It used to be that someone who had, was treated, let's say with Narcan on site and was transported, let's say to Lawrence General, they could walk in the front door and walk out the back door. And there was no requirement for the hospital itself to make sure that that person who received a response from an ambulance for Narcan or for an overdose was required to stay. Whereas I understand that under some of our statewide public health alcohol regulations, if it was alcohol-related, they're required to be, stay overnight and seek evaluation. So I know they were working through some of the statewide regulation changes so that the hospital's response or the hospital's ability to see if this person could get additional treatment were changing. I don't know what the status of those things are. And again, even regardless of the ambulance response, even if it were a, I don't want to make up some bad health, but if someone else was transported for a different reason to Lawrence General, we disconnect from that. We're not, we don't follow through to the point of they become a outpatient, right? We deliberately, that's what the ambulance service does.
You know, as the police chief said at town meeting, because of the laws changing in Massachusetts with marijuana that they're at a, it is a bit of a challenge with marijuana being legal. You can have in your car, you could smell of it, but it's not really easy for them to see who's under the influence of marijuana to the point that they, it affects their driving ability, that you need special training other than to do a urine test. But the officers need a special type of training that just kind of goes by different, looking at their face, whatever. I'm not sure what the rundown is, but again, though, but they could be driving and shouldn't be driving. It's a little bit more difficult. If you had marijuana in the car before, that was a reason. Or if you smelled the marijuana, that was a reason. But now you could say, hey, I was at a party or people were smoking or whatever. So it's, it's a lot of different things that are changing that, I don't know if that would be something that we would be putting into the report.
I think in large part the challenge is specifically as relates to our opiate responses is that, again, you need, at the time that we're responding, we're responding to a call for someone that's overdosed, as Selectman Keane said, right? And maybe we're responding in there in time and maybe we're not. More often than not, it appears in the statistics, we are. But again, we're not a public health agency, we're a public safety agency. So at that point, we do a transport, hopefully we do the transport because if they deny the trans, you know, then that's even worse, right? But we're providing a transport in which point it then becomes a sort of, then it becomes what's next. And from our perspective, we're not, you know, local communities are not in that sort of public health arena. Some are, depending on the size and the magnitude of the numbers. And some of our neighboring communities, quite frankly, have pretty dramatically different numbers in terms of rare overdoses and we do probably four to five times these numbers. And so maybe their commitment to some of those questions about resources is different. So it's a challenge because we need the regulations to help us as well. But I will look to see what we have in terms of general reporting to see if we can find some commonality or thread in terms of overlap between some of the, see if we can create some sort of cause and effect stuff. Is there something else happening that leads to this?
I think, again, this is not for this report, this is just to share my general thinking of, I'm just trying to understand to what extent there is a problem in our community where people have some on a spectrum of issue, right? Not, maybe not to the point of overdose, but some issuing could use some support. And I'm wondering if we have a comprehensive view or should create one.
I mean, if it wasn't that one, the group you were working.
It was, and then it was part, it's why we were a little bit more familiar with Brian's role with substance abuse, Merrimack Valley Substance Abuse Prevention Project, because it really absorbed a big component of that. And we then were given a little bit more of an opportunity to look at how other communities were responding and what data they were taking. So I know that, for instance, next week, we're talking with the coordinator in Andover whose role is fairly different than the two social workers in Methuen. And so the data that they're both, both communities are collecting is very different from each other and what they're using to support the program and how they approach it. And so I have a good idea of what they're doing in Methuen, and so we were going to try and see what they're doing in Andover, which the big difference seems to be the mental health component in the follow-up group. It seems to be a lot more focused on Andover. Methuen's, Methuen's is, I don't think anyone refuses, but I think Methuen's is, regardless, they respond to the, an overdose and there are certainly non-residents that are in that community.
Is Methuen still tied to the PD? The staff members still in the PD?
So Methuen initially started as a, as two part-time social workers.
In the police department?
Yes, housed in the police department. And then last, they just completed a full fiscal year where they were both full-time because the need was.
Does Andover take the same approach?
Andover has theirs as mental health, they have a mental health counselor. I haven't, having not met with them yet, I'm eager to learn more. So I think our police department has worked closely with them to learn what their response has been like. And so they've used this particularly, his full name I don't know, they call him soap, as the same way that you call me Phil, but his name is much longer. And so the way that soap handles it is that I, from what we've been told, is that he works with the schools, police, fire, and not just trying to respond to people who request help, or public safety is responding to, but also try and predict who may have some mental health issues that may end up growing into perhaps abuse. So we'll learn more next week, next Thursday.
So without getting too.
Right off to it for us for the next meeting.
Without getting too philosophical, so the big change over the last twenty years I'm working about was the movement from federal government funding to state government funding on a lot of programs. And as the federal government got out of and more NGOs or nonprofits were formed to deal with this. So the question is in a broader perspective, and Andover's not necessarily a good analogy to us, but it's close, right? And Methuen is, is probably not as well, is the broader philosophical question from a programmatic and a funding perspective is that are we going to start to fill social services agency functions? Because there is the mental health question and there's the dementia question and there's the alcohol abuse question and there's the opiate question and there's, and historically municipalities, other than larger urban areas, have been out of that social services realm. They haven't delivered that service. It's been delivered by state and regional entities. And that's sort of the, the sort of philosophical challenge here is that in places, quite frankly, like Andover that have vast, more financial resources, they add staff and respond to a problem. In places like Methuen, the problem is so large they can't afford not to, right? And that would be the case. And so a place like North Andover is sort of an interesting sort of in-between. And it's interesting to watch because from a social, what I would refer to as social service agency perspective, that isn't where most Massachusetts municipalities have been. That hasn't been part of sort of a service-level expectation. And it's just interesting on this topic, whether or not that's changing the game or not. That doesn't mean there's not a need, it just means, well, there's a whole bunch of needs. And so what do you, what's the role of local government versus the state or regional, regional level to do this?
We did express that with our state delegation in January. We had a very deep conversation. I think it's worth constantly repeating with them, the need for a standard state system to be put in place. Because, I mean, right now, if you have a friend that lives in one Merrimack Valley community who might be dealing with this, you'd say, well, what did you do? Well, I called this police department. And if they're living in another Merrimack Valley community, they may think, well, let me do that, and that's not. Again, it's a patch.
You should have called, called a hell.
Well, that's why I suggest to put it in that quarterly newsletter, at least some high-level numbers, maybe even state-level, whatever. So that, you know, then people have a place to at least go to. Maybe we should post it on our website.
I was just going to say, on the website, I feel like there's lots of places, like on the Board of Health website, first of all, doesn't, doesn't say anything about opiate, so maybe it just points them, this is the resource. But also on, you know, the school website under the, wherever the nurse's information is and on the youth center's website, wherever, I mean, it can all point to the same place. I guess it's back to Chris's analogy of there's lots of doorways people go depending on their age and their situation in life. I would probably go to the school or the youth center first because I've got younger kids and that's where I would go to look. So whatever door people, you know, somebody who has, is a senior, might go to the senior center. So on the senior center site, it can all point to the same ultimate resource. But I don't think we do a very good job of, right now, of pointing people to that resource from wherever they might come.
Yeah, and I would, and I completely agree with you. And it doesn't mean we can't. I would say, and this is not a defensive comment, we don't, again, do the same for Alzheimer's care. Or we don't do the same for alcohol abuse or suicide abuse. But it doesn't mean we can't, given the focus on this topic, is create a single cheat sheet or a single information place and link it to all of those locations. It's really one sheet buried behind all the rest of it, right?
Right, yeah.
And so as they go on these different sites, given the fact that it affects multiple generations in a different way than some other issues, it certainly has merit to do that. I think, so we'll talk, maybe that same kind of information, whatever that looks like that would be in the tax piece, which wouldn't go out until the September mailing, but would be the same kind of thing they could link to off the Board of Health. And so we'll, I'll talk to Brian about starting to create that. He's in a good spot to be able to create that sort of one single sheet for a referral, basically referral information.
It could be just the same link on every, every door, it could just be the same link.
Yeah, it's be the same. Yeah, and so I'll work with Brian to see if we can start to put together some data. We'll show that to you first to see if it, if it hits the spot for what you're trying to get done. And then we'll put it on, yeah, makes perfect sense. And if there continues to be other things you want in terms of the opiate report, I find it.
Sorry, I have one really nitpicky thing.
That's right, we like nitpicky, nitpicky, shawty. We like nitpicky, nitpicky, shocking.
Uh, sorry, I, I am the analyzer, I guess, on these reports. But on the one where you have the number of overdoses by year in a bar chart?
Yes.
Can you add bar segments with the age? Like, you know, red portion of the bar is under 25, and a blue portion of the bar is 25 to 50, and whatever, for each year? Because then you can see which age bracket is where the growth is happening? Because you can see right now that you're going from 15 to 23 to 34 over a three-year period. But is that because in teenagers it's spiking? Or is that because in, it's the same across all, you know what I mean? Like, I'm, I'm trying to think of, where should we be trying to do more education and awareness? Should we be doing it in the schools? Should we be doing it at the senior center? And that's why I'd ask for the age information, but to only have the age information on the 2017 cases isn't really.
Is that how that, that's read, though? Am I reading the, the report right? So just below the age information is the graph, the bar chart that goes left to right as opposed to north to south, right?
Yeah.
And so there's 10, it says opioid overdose statistic by year.
Right.
And so 17, that's 10 through the year. It's not any specific.
Correct.
Right. But you're saying you should break that one stack out of age.
Oh, break that segment by color.
This is already broken by age, but these three aren't. And I'm just saying, take this and actually break each of these bars by age, like by segments.
That's not nitpicky, that's, that's additional information.
Sorry, thank you. Because then I can see which age bracket is causing the increase.
So if we primarily are reporting in five age categories, and we colorize the five age categories?
Correct.
Then we would, that bar would include up to five colors.
Correct.
And with a number of betters.
You don't even need to do all five, honestly. You could do like 15 to 20, well, whatever, yes, do all five, it's fine.
All of this information is really good, don't get me wrong, but the, the one thing we, we do have to be careful of, so that say, because we don't have huge numbers, which is a good thing, so that if you have a 15 to 20-year-old, and the number's been consistent, we say at one, and then the next series of months, now it's two, it looks, in mathematical terms, that's a huge increase. Do you understand what I'm saying? Because we don't have a lot of numbers.
But it's not a percentage, it's an absolute. And on this chart, it would be, it would, it wouldn't be, it would not look huge. It would look like a small.
Yeah.
But the, the point is to just know which age bracket is where we're, we're seeing this increase.
What's that?
Or is it evenly spread?
Makes sense.
I think that's the most informative chart of all the multiple pages, this chart. And if you added the ages, it would be even more so, and then.
All right, well, thank you for that detailed discussion on that.
That's great.
Obviously, this is a topic that we can spend hours and hours talking about, because there's so much passion here. So I, I don't ever mean to cut it short, because I know it's an important topic, but we do have a few other things we need to get to tonight.
Yeah, no, it's fine, it's fine.
Andrew, do you want to cover the job posting log?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, other than the fact that occasionally it's difficult to read, because in the narrative column, we start with the entry of the very first thing that happened. So sometimes you have to read that narrative in reverse order by sentence. So it's, you start with the very first thing that we do, and a step of a process to fill, and then, and if there's another step, that gets added on top of it. So it's something we're working on. But it gives you a narrative of the positions that are open, what, where we stand as the progress. So if you get one of these reports in May, and then another report in June, you may see the same position. And in May, you see that we just posted the job. In June, you may see that we've gotten 25 resumes and interviewed, interviewed 10 folks. So it gives you a sense or a history of what's going on in every position that's open.
And these are also posted under the job site on town, on the town website, right? When they, when they open up, when they're still available.
Yes. Every position that becomes available is posted on the town's website and within the human resource side, so that if you're having to be getting email reminders, you'll look on the town's website, you can see if you posted.
Okay. Any comments on that one?
It's not particularly exciting.
Okay. And I know you had one other thing you want to talk about on board appointments. I skipped over that, but I'll jump back, I'll loop back to it.
No, I was just giving you an update of where we stand relative to board appointments. I think I had attached to the board as where we stood as of, as of the time that the agenda went out.
Okay.
If ever we give you those.
All right. So we'll skip down to ask, unless there's any other comments on any other of the, of the reports that we didn't deep dive on tonight.
I'm saving mine for the day that we do the deep dive.
Okay. All right. So we're going to go down to Ask the Manager. Any, any burning questions coming for Ask the Manager?
So, Mr. Manager, we had had a conversation a few months ago, maybe it was two weeks ago, about a welcome to North, a welcome to North Andover sign on Mass Ave, which seems to be the topic du jour.
Yes.
And it sounded like we were made progress, and then I was like, okay, it popped back up on my newsfeed, I'll respond, and then it sounds like we, we may have not made progress since this morning.
So it is, it is a, a challenging location to place an entering sign. The traditional single pole with the one that's produced by the state, so the ones that are white and black that you see traditionally, those are produced by the state. So those are fairly easy to, just say to the state, if there happens not to be one or we were placed on a lot of occasions, then those are fairly easy to locate. What we're trying to do is one of those granite post-type, like we've done at a couple of other gateways. We identified what we thought, so the balance is, there's not a lot of space between the street and the property lines. In fact, it's very little space. In most cases, the space of the land is owned by the state. And they're, they can be, they're great partners, but they can be a little trickier on these things. So we identified a spot, which we also wanted it near the ramp so that you'd see it, as opposed to, say, placing it close to the mobile, where it wouldn't get all of the entry traffic, right? And there wasn't any room down there anyway. But, but I just happen to identify the site. So we identified a spot that was closest to the off-ramp on 495 heading north, coming onto Mass Ave that way. The state has indicated that that is not an acceptable location, that it provides some line-of-sight problems. So I met with the DBW director again, and we're going to take another shot at an alternative location, and see if we can find a spot that, that would work. But it's a little bit challenging if you take the Google Earth view of, you know, some folks live down there. But it gets real challenging, actually, from the off-ramp further up, like Kyle Thomas and beyond, because there's no, there is no sidewalk to put a five-foot sign across. You just, you have to block the sidewalk, and that's obviously not practical. And then you start to get so far away that you've been in North Andover for a while, you start to worry with the property line. So that's a little bit of a challenge. So somewhere around those off-ramps and on-ramps is the best, because there's a little more room, and it captures what most people see. But if you have an alternative location that you think is a better location, we're more than happy to do it. And if it's on state property, we'll ask the state again.
Is having an elevated sign, I know this may sound goofy, it's not something, I grew up in that neighborhood, I never thought of it until it was brought up, that, oh yeah, I guess you don't know. I mean, I just, you just always know, grew up in town, I would think. But I can appreciate identifying when you actually enter our community. I mean, we identified at every other gateway. But is the Kyle Thomas property having an elevated sign, and I don't mean elevated like 20 feet, but elevated so that it's on the fence, fence perhaps, city corner? I don't know if that's, I'm not.
Yeah, fence would nearly help, but we looked briefly at Kyle Thomas to see if we could get a line of sight. I'm not trying to find no's, I'm trying to find yeses, but it is a challenge.
And you've been very.
We've driven down there, we've looked. So one of the things that challenges a little bit on a, on a gateway sign is, you would prefer your passenger traffic not to have to look across the oncoming lane. It's a little bit of the problem with Kyle Thomas, great sign, you know, so we're, and would prefer to be a little closer this way than, than up to a Kyle Thomas. So I have spoken to Jim Stanford about it, he said we'd go grab a cup of coffee and walk around the area again, and see if we can stick up some more spots and put them on a plan, and we can get the state to work with us on some of the spaces. So, you know, they have a fair amount of green area, but I, I do know what they worry about. They want to make sure that we're not coming to the bottom of the ramp to impact some line of sight in an opposite.
That would be my concern, too, because you've got to see back to that left there when you come down that ramp.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a sharp look back.
Well, they, they were, we were actually proposing it, if you came down to the bottom of the ramp, it was on your right, is an elevated sign that goes in the industrial area?
Yeah.
And we were proposing it a little bit in front of that, but not nearly to the elevation of that industrial, obviously. We were proposing it there.
But that would make sense.
I was going to ask if there's some deal that could be struck with that company, whoever owns that industrial signage, like somehow.
Mounted to the.
If we did something on their sign, and, or in front of their sign, help them approve their sign.
We could just ask them, we'll have them to do a deal. Say, hey, can we put a, what can we do to end this sign on your signboard?
Yeah.
We want it to stand out, right?
Yeah, right, we want it to.
So that can you separate.
I didn't, I wasn't saying as part of it, but like as, you know, if it had, yeah, if it has to be.
Yeah, we're, listen, it's important to us, I mean, we, you know, we know it's a bit of an odd challenge, right? With all the land, you can't put a sign, and it's a little fun, it's a little interesting. But it's important that we put a sign, and that folks know that they're entering the community. So we'll come back with another option. I just talked to Jim this week or last week, when he told me that they, they had said no to that. So we'll continue to come up with a series of options and show you those, and it's important. So we're not.
I would say that the one going off, way we wrote it, right onto 114, it says, welcome to Lawrence. And that's not Lawrence, that's North Andover. Their sign should be across the street.
Lawrence on both sides. From Denrock? So you mean 114, yeah. Believe it or not, the line runs a little crooked there. But that, we're talking about more the gateway sign with the granite post and the red across it.
I know, but maybe we need to do a vertical sign instead of.
Yeah, though, and the state would, in that case, because that's a state sign, and the state would put that right on the line. So they're going to put it at what we now know to be a bridge. There's a, there's a bridge over the, a drip of the Shawshene right there, right at the diagonal that runs from the auto, car sales place to the mobile diagonally. If you go to, could pass the weeds, you're actually on a little bit of a bridge, we learned about today. But the, they would put it literally on the line. And the state puts it up, it's the marking book.
I don't do, it's not that I don't believe you, but I have to tell you that there's people in North Andover that live right there where the Lawrence sign is, and it goes down to the law.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I'm going to.
But there, if you look at the marker, it's on the other side of the road, so it's always interesting.
Great confusion, man.
You know, they don't.
I'll focus on this one first, but I understand, I, I've seen that, I understand the confusion.
Lost in chickens, there's whatever it's called.
Maybe we need to do, what do we call that, permeate?
Yeah, we'll have to do, peramulate.
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 Can we set up a peramulate with Lawrence and North Reading at some point?
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah. We should do that. We haven't done that in a while.
Isn't it just a town thing rather than a city thing?
Oh, is it just towns, where it's Sophia and Lawrence?
No, you invite them. Andover does it. We hit a few, but you're right, you could do North Reading, you could do Boxbury, you could do Middleton.
Yeah, we haven't done it, the last thing we did was Andover, and we should do it again.
We just get points and I.